Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Monday, August 7th, 2023, City Council meeting. I'd first await a motion to leave the non-public and to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, to start this evening's agenda, Kelly, will you please call the roll?
Yeah. One minute. Mayor McCackren?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Counselor Taber?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Moreau?
Here.
Counselor Bagley?
Here.
Counselor Lombardi?
Here.
Counselor Blaylock?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
And as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, just like to send my well wishes to Mr. George Remick. Had a little bit of a fall in the hospital, but he is recuperating, and I'm sure he's watching right now. So please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, the acceptance of minutes for July 10th, 2023, and July 24th, 2023. I'd wait a motion to accept the minutes of those states.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we're coming to recognitions and volunteer community reports. One that's not on here, and I'm going to get to the ones officially on the agenda. I just want to call out and recognize our Portsmouth Little League team played a hell of a season. Came up just one half of an inning short of winning the New Hampshire State Championship. It was a hell of a game to watch, and there's a lot that can be learned by watching sports in general, learning a lot from sports in general, but the grit and determination that these kids had was something that made me really proud to be from Portsmouth and watch these kids play. And another in that vein, William Shaquin, who was a member of one of the last state championship teams to play, earned a spot on the Northeast Regional Team with a chance to represent the United States in the national team. So kudos to him and product of Portsmouth baseball. Couldn't be prouder. So with that, and I wanted to get that out before because we have a recognition of Kathleen Dwyer, Assistant City Attorney. And normally, I love to wax on and celebrate all the people that have done so much for the city, and Kathleen certainly has, but I am going to call out the bullpen on this one. I asked Mr. Sullivan, former city attorney, to write a few remarks. I said, you know, let your heart be your guide, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes. 30 minutes might be pushing it, Bob. But if there's somebody that can deliver really good words to a very important and special person, it's Bob. So the floor is yours.
Your Honor, members of the council, I need to begin by thanking you for allowing me the privilege of commemorating briefly the career with the city of Portsmouth of Kathleen Dwyer. It is a privilege to me because for 37 years, she has been my coworker, she has been my compatriot in fighting the daily battles on behalf of the city that we fought. Perhaps most importantly, she has been my friend, more than a friend. The obvious challenge is that she performed all those functions for 37 years, and this is a council meeting. You've already been here for a couple of hours, you were going to be here for hours more, and I really can't take the time that would be justified to commemorate her career to you. I think, however, that there is a single vignette which will make the entire point that I would have made were there more time. And it is this. So Kathleen was hired on August 11th, 1986 by former city manager Calvin A. Canny. Mr. Canny was an exceedingly capable city manager. This very building is to his credit, as are so many other things throughout the city. Mr. Canny has become known, I think, for, among other things, his astute hiring practices. Mr. Canny hired Kathleen Dwyer. Now, he also hired me.
I thought you were going there.
She came here as a prosecutor, and after a while, as a prosecutor, began to do general city legal work, and then came shortly thereafter, the moment that I will describe to you. The superintendent of schools at the time that she became a member of the city legal department was Timothy Monahan. Tim was a very intelligent and very quick-witted Irish guy. So one day, Tim comes into my office, which at the time was in the former city hall on Daniel Street, and we had a discussion about a new problem that existed for school departments nationwide, and that is that special education, which had previously been dealt with primarily as a local matter, became federal as a result of federal laws adopted right at that time. And the federal regulations are complex, Byzantine perhaps, and so what all school departments, including the Portsmouth School Department, had to do quickly was to hire outside legal counsel who knew about this new place to give advice to school departments. Tim Monahan said to me that day, I can still picture, he said, in describing what I've just told you, he said, "This situation is going to cost the Portsmouth School Department $100,000 in outside counsel fees this year alone," he said, "to cover the issues created by the new special education law." And what Mr. Monahan said was, "Is there any way that the city legal department could help us with this problem?" Well, the way that the city legal department determined to help Mr. Monahan with his problem was Kathleen Dwyer. She knew no more than anybody else about this new complicated federal law at the time, but she set out to learn it. She can educational classes, went to seminars, and in a very short period of time, she became quite expert in this new complicated area of law. The city did not have to hire that $100,000 a year worth of outside counsel because we had Kathleen, and she did the job. She did the job in the 1980s, and she's done that job every single day from then until today. Now, she did this as a part-time city employee with a part-time salary commensurate with what city employees make, not what outside specialist lawyers make. So if you take Mr. Monahan's estimate from the mid-1980s, that this would cost $100,000 a year to get this done, and you consider that we have gotten that job done every year since the 1980s till now without paying that $100,000, I think in that one short clip, you'll see, just in that one way, that value that Kathleen Dwyer has brought to the city. I mean, the actual concrete measurable cash value she has brought all of those years. Now, she did this so well that probably five years after she had started it, another superintendent came and talked to me and became involved in Kathleen Dwyer's efforts regarding special education. This time, the fellow was Nate Greenberg. Nate Greenberg was a pretty intelligent, quick-witted Jewish guy. And Nate more than said, Nate wrote in a document which still exists in Kathleen's file to this very day, in reference to her special education work, he wrote, "Dear Wonder Woman." And she was, in fact, a Wonder Woman, remains that till right now, and therefore, I'm very pleased to present to you she will come and talk, Kathleen Dwyer.
I have to thank Bob for signing me, the request that Tim Monahan had, and I've worked with eight superintendents since that time. And over that time, I've had the support of my family, had four children, and it was a great place to work, to be in the school department. I bring them to Little Harbor and say I'm starting, they're out in the hall right now, the grandchildren, and say, no, we like kids here. So it was a great place to work and have a young family. And I started, it was just Bob and I back in Daniel Street many years ago, and he taught me how to survive in the municipal environment was to be patient and to hold your tongue. And I tried to take that to heart, and he and I have been through many ups and downs, traumas and the like over the years, and we made it to my 37 and his 40, and I thank him for that. And I'd like to especially thank the educators and the administrators that work so hard in this school system. Started my special ed career with Bruce Bowley, who was the special ed director at the time, taught me so much about special education and his successors after that. And every day, they work so hard, and in that myriad of special ed, the complex world and the high stakes dollars that we try to save the city every year by the legal representation that we did, and I've had just great support doing that, and I just, it's been a great career. I loved what I did, but now the mouth in the hall there is calling me. And I'd just like to say, my family is here tonight, two of my four children, two of them are flying in later in the week from Colorado and Florida for Kira's second birthday, so I know where I stand in the pecking order of things. But again, I'd like to thank you for just a great career and thank Bob for all these years together.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Welcome. Congrats again, Kathleen. It is always, as a dad with a six-and-a-half-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old, I always love hearing kids at City Hall. It is a great reminder of why we are all here, if nothing more, and they do so much more, but children are a great proxy for what we always talk about here, and that's the future. And none of what we would try to decide would not be here if not for them. So thank you for your family for coming this evening to honor you. It means a lot to us, and you have meant a great deal to the city of Portsmouth. So thank you very much, Kathleen, for all you've done. But don't feel as though you guys have to stay. There could be dinner plans. You don't have to stay through the whole thing. So feel free to go and celebrate as a family. So thank you, Kathleen.
Just one more thing. Rocking chair for me?
Oh, yes.
Oh, my gosh.
I was wondering the same thing.
I don't have to take it tonight, but I just wanted to be sure.
Could you come take a photo? You don't have to sit in the chair.
With the grandkids.
If the family is here, could they come? Bob wouldn't mind if Bob had been already run off.
No, Bob's still there. He's still here.
Come on up, yeah.
Especially the little ones.
I think she's grabbing the kids.
You can't hear any crying in the picture.
They look like they're smiling, I mean.
This is the best lighting that Portsmouth has to offer, right on top of your bed.
Wait one second, Monty. There's more family coming. Yeah, you probably should sit in the chair. I'm going to hold it, Mike, you got it? There's somebody who wants to sit in the chair. She's so cute.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
We got to go sit down there. All right. Next up, public comment. Portsmouth residents, go first. First, we have Frank Desper, the American Legion, on the topic of Keno. Good to see Frank.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council, residents of Portsmouth. I'm here to speak on behalf of supporting Keno because our funds are slowly depleting. As was mentioned earlier, our children are our future. We support three baseball, Legion baseball teams, one Little League team, Portsmouth Middle School basketball, and countless scholarships to our students at Portsmouth. Please put on the ballot this year. I won't get anything lengthy because I do like to talk, but please, residents of Portsmouth, vote yes for Keno. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Next up is Dave Fine on the subject of locks.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you all for being here tonight and giving me a few minutes. Last month, I was here, I think you may remember, I addressed you all and specifically city manager about the locks and the fence in Prescott Park and how a statement had been made that the fence was going to come down, the city was going to take back the fence. I think the city manager made that statement. Once again, I'm here to remind you that you don't tell the public what to do, you work for us. And so I'm here to reiterate what I said about last month, we had 650 signatures on a petition down by the locks that you plan to either remove, destroy, or throw away. This month, I'm here with 1,500 signatures, and I've still had no call as to what your plans are. So I'm going to appeal to you to let me know, I'm going to leave my personal card here with my personal phone number. I'll leave 10 because I don't think I'm allowed to approach the bench here, but I'll leave 10 there, 10 of you. And I would appreciate a phone call from somebody explaining what the plan is. I've not heard it. And our fear is that in the dead of night, somebody's going to come and take those locks and take those fences down. That's our concern. I've been watching the locks. I spend a lot of time in the park. I'm working for a presidential candidate, and so I spend time in the Freedom area there. I'm working for Marianne Williamson for president in the Democratic Party, but I'm at the locks all the time. I'm there four or five hours sometimes a day, and I've collected a lot of video and a lot of audio from people that have come to visit those locks. Each lock, these locks represent love, and hopefully, our city represents love. And every single lock has a story. Next month, if the locks are still there, or even if they're not, I'm going to show up with a video that I've been putting together. Hopefully, we can show it up here. I'm preparing it for you all to see, but also for the press, who are very interested in this story, the further along, those of us in favor of keeping the locks and keeping things exactly as they are. No alternative plan, no half-measures, exactly the way they are. So I appreciate you listening, I appreciate the time. It may seem trivial, but I don't believe it's a trivial issue because I understand it's part of a much bigger plan to turn that park into Disneyland, which has already been approved. We've already had an abomination in the center of town, and we don't want that to happen with the park that was meant to be used by the working people. Thank you.
Dave, you could just bring those up to us. I don't know if you can leave them there.
Can I do that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Next up, James Johnson on field lights. And just a reminder, if you could just get your name and your city at the beginning.
Good evening, councilors. My name is James Johnston. I live on 1412 South Street in Portsmouth. I'll be a junior this coming fall at PHS. First off, I would like to personally thank Portsmouth Recreation Department for making the community campus what it is today for the youth of the city and also what they are doing to the high school field. But the reason I'm here today is to request that you consider extending the operating hours for the community campus field lights for the remainder of the summer for 30 extra minutes and consider it for the next spring and summer alike. The field lights provide a safe and welcoming environment to residents and visitors. However, currently, they are only on until 8:30 PM. This limits opportunities for people to gather, exercise, and enjoy the space during the evening hours. Keeping the lights on until 9:00, 9:30-ish makes it more available to the public. I kindly urge the city council to consider this request and evaluate its feasibility to better accommodate the needs and desires of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next, we have Francis Cormier on the topic of Leo and Hippo. And I believe those are his puppets.
Francis Cormier, Melbourne Street. Hey, Leo, I've heard a lot about inflation lately. What exactly is inflation? Well, remember when you went to Boston and you could get on the subway for just 25 cents and go anywhere in the city? Well, today, the same subway ride costs $2.50. That's a tenfold increase. Holy hippopotamus, that inflation is really bad. Or maybe there's something fishy about public transportation. No, Hippo, the only thing fishy about public transportation is they're taking a bunch of suckers for a ride. What causes inflation anyway? Inflation starts when the government spends more money than it really has. So they print a bunch of money out of thin air with nothing to back it up. So the value of the dollar drops. We should go to Washington and tell the president and senators that inflation hurts everybody and to stop spending money that they don't have. But they'll never listen to us, Hippo. But they have to listen to us, Leo. We're a democracy, and they're supposed to consider the will of the people. Our leaders are supposed to be open-minded. Oh, they're open-minded, all right. They're so open-minded, their brains fell out. Be sure to vote in November, everybody, and see you at the polls.
Thank you, Francis. Next up is Herb Lloyd on Soul Smart Program. I also have John Cardy. Are you guys both speak? Okay.
Yeah, we can, we go back to back if you're okay with that, and we can get six minutes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. My name's Herb Lloyd, I live at 5 Ruth Street here in Portsmouth, and I'm a member of the City of Portsmouth Sustainability Committee, and we've been looking at a program by the name of Soul Smart, which is federally funded, and the committee has asked the city council to consider making this an action that the city takes and participates in. So I think all of you received a packet, I believe it's on the agenda tonight also, to review the opportunity to engage in the program. So I'll just take a couple minutes here, talk about some of the benefits. The Soul Smart Program is, would help educate city staff, city residents, commercial property owners, and the advantages of solar and the cost savings of solar. I'm not saying, and the committee is not saying, the Sustainability Committee is not saying that City of Portsmouth is not already doing a great job in moving us towards and removing any impediments towards increasing the adoption of solar. But here's an opportunity with a federally funded program that has over 500 municipalities across the country have already participated in this program. The goal is to increase that to 1,000. The program is managed by the City County Management Association, which the city manager, Karen Cannard, and also Monte Boheman are both members of this organization that is managing and is driving this program. Federally funded again by the Department of Energy, and so, like I said, there are 500 municipalities. Primarily, it focuses on permitting, inspection, planning, zoning, community engagement, and also the marketing of solar. And how do we make those aware within the city that own property what the advantages are? The city by no means is mandating that people have to move to solar, but I think we all have an opportunity here to advance education on the benefits of solar, and that's what this program would help the city do. It provides technical consulting, it provides best practices of what is being done at a national level, and this is not just a federal agency that's saying this is what you should do. This has been a national collaboration that's been going on for years. There's four, and John will talk a little bit more, but there are four municipalities in the state of New Hampshire that have already signed up and completed certification. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks very much for having us. John Cardy, 324 Hanover Street, and like Herb, I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission. Shout out to councilors Cook and Denton for the Thursday nights and the Sunday morning coffees and listening to us blather endlessly on the coffees and listening to us blather endlessly on these issues, and really appreciate your support. So this program, as Herb mentioned, it's an existing set of best practices. Nobody's mandating anything to anyone, but it's, it's been in place since 2016. Over 500 communities across the country, 139 million people are in residential areas that have taken advantage of this program. The cost to the city is zero. It's already been funded by the Department of Energy. The whole intent is to make these best practices, guidelines, marketing materials, things that have worked in other municipalities, make them available to more municipalities. So our goal in doing this is to, first of all, have our commission in the City of Portsmouth in this much larger community, take advantage of what others have learned, and make it easier and more widespread to take a look at solar. As Herb mentioned, there are four municipalities in New Hampshire, Bedford, Keene, Lebanon, and Peterborough that are already participants. Four more are in the pipeline. There are 18 cities in Massachusetts next door that are in the program already, including the city of Boston. So again, we would be taking advantage of a program that many, many other cities are already taking advantage of. So what we're asking essentially is, as you look at the materials, we're looking to provide a way to make it easier for municipality, for the municipality, for residents and for businesses to take a look at solar and all the things that Herb mentioned. What would be required, well, basically, for this body to agree to sign up to become a designee? Think of it as a good housekeeping seal of approval. There are bronze, silver, gold, and platinum level certifications. Again, no cost to the city, but those certifications are a stamp of approval from this organization that Portsmouth has achieved this level of solar friendliness. And we're not mandating implementations. It's just about education, streamlining permitting, streamlining inspection, and sending a message out to everyone, all of us, the business owners and residents and so on, that Portsmouth is open for business for solar. We're doing what we can to make it easier. So next steps, if the city decides to move forward with this, Herb and I, as members of the committee, have already volunteered to, to help the city get this done. A survey of the organizations that have taken this program nationwide have shown that, generally speaking, it's 30 to 40 hours of city time, that is, city employee time, required to reach certification. The rest of the time involved comes from volunteers. So we're basically following that playbook, and that's what we're proposing. So we're asking you, if you would, to take the action to decide to move forward with it. The city would then apply for the Soul Smart Program, and we'll decide what our target designation level is. Thank you. Really appreciate your consideration.
Thanks so much, John. Next up, Eli Sokarelius on the topic of Keno. And Kevin's coming back and forth because we got a couple of technical difficulties here.
I see that.
He's not trying to throw anybody off, all right?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, city council. I'm here this evening to hope that the Keno that has been shot down several times by the council could be reconsidered, considering that the small restaurant owners in this city who have been here for quite some time, including myself, would be grateful to this council if they would do that and put it on the agenda so that people could vote on it. And through the years, myself, as well as a lot of the other restaurants, have sponsored basketball teams and other events for the city, and we'd just like the city to help us get Keno into town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eli. And just to clarify, it's, the vote is to put it on the ballot for the people of Portsmouth to vote on.
Yes, I believe, I believe that's the way it has to go.
That has to happen.
Yeah.
We haven't, I guess in the last two times, at least the last time I was in the council and the time before, we voted to put it on the ballot, and it's come close.
Right.
But the council has not refused to put it on the ballot, but it's up to the people.
I think that's all we're asking.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you.
Next up, Christina Luski on the topic of McEntire, and I think McNabb, but I can't read the second part.
I'm Christina Luski, 94 Odeorn Point Road, Portsmouth. I have some misgivings about trying once again to acquire the McEntire property. I can understand only committing to two months of time and $30,000 in expenditures, since that's not something major. I would hope that the city would not extend this agreement beyond that unless there is proof of a strong likelihood of success, so you won't be wasting the taxpayers' money. There is little room for workforce housing on the 2.1 acre site. According to Senator Gregg, the plan required a lot of open space and only a couple small buildings in the Federalist style. I believe the allocation was for one-third open space, one-third commercial, and only one-third for residential. The existing building would have to be demolished to create the Federalist style, and it could not be merely converted, as called for by President Biden's plan for surplus government properties. It also sounds like you've given up on getting the post office back on site, which is disappointing. When Councilor Denton suggested affordable housing at McEntire many years ago, I commented that this would force middle-class residents who themselves could not afford to live downtown to subsidize others so that they could reside in low-cost housing in a luxury neighborhood. And there is some unfairness in that. At the time, the editorial board of the Portsmouth Herald agreed, noting that there was no fair way to determine who would qualify for this housing, except perhaps by holding a lottery. Whatever you do, proceed with caution and keep the overtaxed middle class in mind. Do not get us into anything long-term, which will be so expensive that it will cause taxes to increase so much that more middle-class residents will be forced to relocate to nearby lower-tax towns. And regarding another topic, regarding developer McNabb, his proposal, remember, the last thing that downtown Portsmouth needs is fewer well-located parking spaces, especially if they are revenue-producing. We cannot afford to lose any spaces, either on the street or in the garage. And do not remove any entrance or exit to the high-hand of a garage. That would create chaos.
Thank you, Christina. Next up, Irish Mike on the topic of token gains.
Good evening, Mayor. Michael Harden, Portsmouth. The white liberal differs from the white conservative. The liberal is more deceitful, more hypocritical than the conservative. Both want power, but the white liberal is the one who has perfected the art of posing as the black's friend and benefactor. And by winning the friendship and support of the black, the white liberal is able to use the black as a poem or a weapon in its political football game. That is constantly raging between the white liberals and the white conservatives. The black is nothing but a political football, and the white liberal controls this ball through tricks and false promises, false promises of integration and civil rights. In this game of deceiving and using the black, the white liberal has complete cooperation of the blacks, who sell out, who sell out their people for a few crumbs of token gains and token progress. And in doing so, the white liberal tricks the one-time oppressed black into taking on the role of the aggressor for the white liberal's political gain. And that's happening right here in Portsmouth. Like in the 80s, the first black police officer was pretty much forced out of town. Those racist officers pretty much forced him out of town. And it's, it's happened right up until today, promoting the, promoting the wrong people just for their own political gain. And it needs to stop, and they should look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, David. Oh, you're from Kittery, sorry. Come back to Page Trace on the topic of Portsmouth.
Something new and different. Page Trace, 27 Hancock Street. Common sense, ladies and gentlemen. Example, Councilor Cook, at all. I assume you understand the words "direct pecuniary interest." A conflict of financial interest can work both ways. The sword has two edges. You see, someone can be equally conflicted and make dreadfully poor decisions when faced with a possible loss of finances. A loss can be just as serious an impetus as a gain. The words you should have used are "direct pecuniary interest." As to McEntire, you were all elected by the entire city of Portsmouth. While I applaud the thought of more affordable housing, dear God, you go from trying to invade a quiet neighborhood of Panaway Manor to the most valuable piece of property in the city of Portsmouth. You're giving away vast amounts of tax revenue dollars that could benefit the residents of Portsmouth. You should care about that. Besides, if the legislature is still viable, the McEntire parcel is to be used for economic development. However, much you might want to solely affordable housing, the existing legislature says one-third, one-third, one-third. Common sense says you're busy giving away already what you don't yet own in an attempt to get it. If you've horse-traded to get it, that's on you. Honesty says there must be an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, and an RFP, Request for Proposal. Please think of the Portsmouth residents who vote. I see. If you can't spend it, you give it away. November comes early. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up, Petra on, Petra Huda on various.
Good evening, Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I have various topics. I'm going to try to talk fast so I can get most of it in. Most of my stuff is questions. First one, what does the motion the mayor is putting forward on the McEntire workforce housing really mean? Does the mayor have some good news to share? Why, Mr. Mayor, is this new workforce housing proposal only considering 100 to 200 possible residents coming forward? What about the other 21,800 residents? Workforce housing, even on Court Street, could only benefit up to 200 residents. What about the rest of us? What about the 3, 3,500 residents that have participated in the whole community plan process? What are you telling them? We don't care? Next, the McNabb presentation. So on tonight, under the presentation, under the city manager's item number 13, we have a presentation from Mr. McNabb. There is also a motion. Motion to approve the work proposed in concept. My question, what exactly does that mean? Does that, is that a green light to go forward? Is that we like this and we want, we want to move forward? Next question I have is, I am not seeing anywhere on the agenda where any comments will be taken, so I can make the assumption that this council will suspend the rules and allow the public to speak the same amount of time that was allowed to Mr. McNabb. I call to your attention Rule Number 41 of the council. Rule Number 41 says, addresses by the public, members of the public at large may address the council on any issue being discussed by the council after a motion to allow the same has been made by a council member, which you did on the 17th, and passed by majority vote, which you did on the 17th, and provided that no person shall speak longer than five minutes. Mr. McNabb got to speak without a presentation for over an hour. My question tonight is, are you going to let the public speak the same amount of time, according to your rules? My perspective is coming from 10 years in accounting for construction, where the most important document of any project is the project plan and the timing of each step or job phase that has to be done in a certain order. The question that our mayor asked the developer for a project plan and a timeline was a great question. Personally, with my background and knowing, even Googling this, a construction schedule is a timeline for every task and event in a construction project. This council has to worry about not only the developer's plan to do this, the parking garage, and also the master plan, and how this interfaces with everything else. So, Mr. Mayor, you deserve to have a project plan, as you requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next up, Thomas Bowden on the topic of Keno.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Bowden. I live at 892 Owen Road in Portsmouth, lifelong member of Portsmouth and very proud of the city. I'm talking today about Keno from the perspective of the Elks. The Elks is a very large organization in town with approximately 2,000 members. This year alone, we've started Project Link. Project Link is to try to help out the largest suicide rate of any military. It is the 18 to 21-year-olds. We've started this program. We've provided concert tickets, fishing trips, barbecues, all these things that came from the Elks funds that we get from our charity drives and the money that we earn. This past weekend, a bunch of us got together through a grant that we got and built a gym for the kids over in Greenleaf, so that they can have a nice workout area, safe equipment, new equipment, things that the city needs. The funds that we would get from Keno, if the board approves to put it on the ballot, would only go to help out those programs that we have. We've spoken to other lodges throughout the state that do have Keno in their town, and they've been able to increase the amount of funding that they've been giving back to the community and the town and the people that really need it. So I humbly ask for your blessing on adding this to the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for all you do for Portsmouth. Next up, Lonnie Cherry on the topic of Keno.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, residents of Portsmouth. I'm here also to speak on support of getting the Keno on the ballot. I'm also this year's current exalted ruler of the Elks Lodge in Portsmouth. And just to reiterate what Tom has said, those funds that we see from those types of gaming really do help this community out. We give to a lot of different organizations within the city of Portsmouth and donate quite considerably to the local sports teams, to a lot of the homeless shelters, Family First, stuff like that. And those, you know, getting Keno in our lodge would greatly help us in continuing to do that charitable work. So I humbly ask that we make sure that Keno ends up on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie? Next up is, let's see, Peter Samsic and Larry Cattaldo. Do you guys want to have six minutes or three minutes?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to have six minutes. We might not need it all, but yes. So, thank you, honorable councilors and city manager. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Citywide Neighborhood Committee as the co-chair, and I want to speak on the topic of our concerns and our support for the Spinnaker Point Fitness Center. Today, I come to you to express these concerns and support for the future of the Spinnaker Point Fitness Center. These sentiments are also shared by the Citywide Neighborhood Committee, of which I am the co-chair. At the Citywide Neighborhood Committee meetings and the city council meetings in 2022 and At the Citywide Neighborhood Committee meetings and the city council meetings in 2022 and '23, several residents commented how important this facility is to their well-being and asked the council to ensure that all needed repairs and maintenance work be performed. This facility has been designated by the city as its primary senior fitness center with no other currently available alternative. While residents greatly appreciate the facility and the considerable improvements that were made to it as the result of the COVID situation and the resulting federal dollars that were brought to the city, several critical health and safety issues are still unresolved because they represent greater investments in time and money. At the August 21, 2023 Citywide Neighborhood Committee meeting, these issues were discussed, resulting in a unanimous vote to urge the city to ensure that needed repairs be performed. In September of 2022, former Chair Larry Cattaldo and I filed two capital improvement project requests, one asking for the outstanding maintenance issues to be completed, the second CIP asked for the consideration of a purchase of the facility in the future. The response to our CIPs by city staff was that all needed work has already been completed and that no further investments were warranted since we did not own this facility. This comment is completely understandable. However, it results in needed repairs and investments being rejected, even though upgrades are warranted and the work would benefit from energy efficiency rebates by our two utilities and in addition to recently made available federal grants. In response to our CIPs, city staff advised us to present our concerns to the Recreation Board. Mr. Cattaldo and I did that on April 19, 2023, and were told by the board that they would evaluate our concerns. However, only recently, I was informed that in fact that board forwarded our concerns to the Public Works Department, which is approximately where we first started. The recently released need study completed by the Recreation Department points out that the city of our, a city of our size should have two aquatic centers and that Spinnaker Facility is counted as one of these, as well as the indoor, indoor pool. Today, I wish to keep my comments short. However, on behalf of the Citywide Neighborhood Committee, I will be requesting some time in the future as part of your regular agenda so that we can provide you a little bit more details about the Spinnaker Point Facility. And Larry, if you want to add some comments?
Yeah, thank you very much. Larry Cattaldo, Citywide Neighborhood Committee Member, former chair. I went to this facility, and it is really good. However, there are some major issues that still, are still around, and one of them that I noticed was there were leaks from the ceiling, and there was mold, and there were some other things. So we're not, what we want to do is get on the agenda and for no more than 10 minutes, spell this out and, and ask for some relief here. What happened with the Public Works Department is that we got, we listened to what they said, and then they said, go to the Recreation Board, and then we did, and then I came back to, to the Public Works Department, just like getting the proverbial runaround. Not saying that that's really true, but that's the way it looks to me. Anyhow, we asked that we get on the agenda and, and present some documentation, some other things that would help in this decision. On entirely separate matter, National Night Out, I want to thank all of the city councilors for the way you went to each of the 17 neighborhoods and, and you did it in an orderly fashion so that everybody in those neighborhoods at least saw one or two city councilors. And I want to thank the mayor for, for making that possible. Also, the Police Department did an outstanding job. The Fire Department was there. We were very pleased. I stayed solely on Rock Street Park, and I have to say that we were really impressed with, with the city and the city council for helping us here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Peter. Next up, Jennifer Mandelbaum, maybe on the Citywide Neighborhood business? No, just on.
No. Hi there. Jennifer Mandelbaum, 7 Portlock Place. This is my first in-person city council meeting, so I thought I was adding my name to a general sign-in, not a sign-up for public comment. So my apologies for that, but just thank you all for your service to our community.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up, Ted Jankowski on the topic of McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the attorney to speak to you. Ted Jankowski from 27 Franklin Street here in Portsmouth. And I'll be brief. You've got a big meeting in front of you this evening. I just urge each and every one of you to vote for the mayor's motion, send a powerful message that this is what the city wants to do. I'd also like to just add a my thank you to Kathleen Twire for her 37 years of service here with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Next up, Cliff Deagle on High Street, guessing this is, oh, Lad Street, proposal.
My name is Cliff Doyle.
Sorry, Doyle.
It's okay. And I live at and own the property of 10 Lad Street, which is going to be greatly impacted by this proposal. I see here that the, this is a sample motion, is a memorandum of agreement between the city that the rough scope of this work has not even been roughed out yet. We really don't know exactly what it, I was with Mark the other day when we did the walkthrough, and I've known Mark for a very long time. We were renovating 10 Lad in 1980. He was doing his first major project next door, so we've known each other for a long time. And I like Mark very much, but this is going to affect us greatly, and I'm not really sure that I'm on board with all of the plans that I was informed about. He was talking about raising the level of Lad Street to the level of the sidewalks. And you're going to create basically what appears to be a pedestrian mall. Now, I don't know about you, I've lived in this town all my life. When was the last time you went up Chestnut Street? That's a small little street. It's still a street, but basically, I think most people now think it's a pedestrian walkway. And I think if you do what he suggests on High Street and Lad Street, you're going to have a problem with pedestrians in the road not realizing that it's still a street. Now, when I was originally told about this plan, the plan was to close the High Street entrance to the parking garage and that it was going to be a pedestrian mall. During the walkthrough, I was pleased to find out that that was really not any longer the plan, that the plan was, was now to basically enhance the aesthetics of the area so that Mr. McNabb's new project will look a lot nicer. And I'm not really sure it's a benefit to anybody but him. It looks nice, I'm sure, but I think it's going to create a lot of problems. And the raising, the antonym, they have 13 parking spaces behind my building. These streets are active. It's not like Chestnut Street. There's a lot of traffic on these streets. The High Street entrance to the garage is, and Mark informed me that that was merely a suggestion, he's sort of taken that off the table, is kind of a relief valve for the other two part, area of entrances to the garage. There are 13 parking spaces behind my building that are used constantly. I go down those streets two or three times a day myself. Turning them into what he's suggesting, I think is going to create a lot of problems. Now, I see here that there's going to be a presentation on Section 13, and perhaps it would have been better had I waited for that presentation before I spoke. But from what I can see here, there really isn't any real outline of a real plan of exactly he wants to do. It says the developer has not identified the rough scope of the work. So perhaps I'm a little premature. Maybe I should be waiting until I see that plan before I contest it. That's about all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you, Cliff.
What is this vote going to do? If, if there's a motion made here, is this motion locking us into this plan?
So this is in a dialogue, but since you're here, this is public comment, but we will go through this with the, the city attorney during that. The rough scope would, as I understand it, and we will confirm this when we get to that board on the agenda, anything that would be agreed upon and agreed upon with the butters, like if there were changes to entrances and things like that, would have to come back before the city council for a final approval of the memorandum of understanding.
Okay. So this is all going to be, have to be much more clear about what his intent really is before it gets okay.
There's a lot that has to happen before this plan moves forward. The vote here tonight will be to say the butters may or may not be in favor of this. That's, remains to be seen, but we'd like to move forward with better understanding conceptually around this. But that would, we will get into all of that during the dialogue.
Well, I know the butters that I've talked to in the immediate area really aren't on board with a lot of this. They certainly don't want the High Street entrance to the garage closed, and they certainly don't want the, the short-term parking eliminated. Those are kind of crucial spots unless you want to be cruising up to the third floor of the parking garage looking for a spot so you can get your haircut.
I.
So, yeah, I'm just saying.
Thank you, Cliff. I do appreciate it, and we will have a further discussion on that later this evening. Appreciate you coming out. Next up, Peter Lockland, also on the McNabb proposal.
Mayor McCracken, members of the council, Peter Lockland, Baxter Road. On January 2, 1976, Portsmouth Herald editorialized against proposed changes to Market Square. The editorial was titled, "Why Mess With The Traffic?" You've all seen the photos of the 109 linear feet of pavement from the North Church to what is now Starbucks. Not a single tree or planter in the entire length of Congress Street. The Herald editorial stated, "Frankly, we don't think the square needs any prettying up. It's Strawberry Bank, not Beauty and Market Square, that's going to draw people into downtown. And when they get to downtown, people want to know how to get to Strawberry Bank, not look at some foliage." Well, we now see large numbers of tourists enjoying foliage every day in our downtown, spending money, creating jobs, not simply trying to find their way to Strawberry Bank. This would not be the case if it were not for the downtown beautification of the 1970s. Changes that were controversial were strong opposition, led by the owner of the property adjacent to what is now Starbucks. The allegations of the opponents was that it would take away parking and thus be detrimental to the downtown. Well, it did take away parking, but it was not detrimental. It was transformational and saved the downtown. I suggest that the proposals being made by Mr. McNabb have the potential to be similarly transformational for those two streets and, as I would suggest, is the walkthrough that McNabb has constructed between Penn Hollow and Pleasant Street, transforming that area. Finally, I want to point out that several years ago, some of you will remember this, the city had an opportunity to put a large parking structure behind the Worth Plaza on city land, land that the city already owned. But because of, the proposal was rejected in large part because of concern about inconvenience to customers of a store that has now disappeared. Instead of having additionally centrally located parking, we have a garage on expensive land on the edge of the earth. I urge you to find a way to make the proposed Market Square improvements happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. It's always a pleasure to have you here. Next up, Gary Epler on the charging.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I start, I just want to thank you all for your work and time that you put in for the community. So, thank you very much. I'm here to talk about the status of a city ordinance with respect to electric vehicle chargers. Oh, my name's Gary Epler, 2 Sylvester Street. I'm most specifically concerned with Level 3 or fast chargers. Those are the chargers that could charge most EVs to at least 80% level within 20 or 30 minutes. Right now, there are no Level 3 or fast chargers within the city. Currently, the definition of a motor vehicle service station reads that it's an establishment that sells fuel, including but not limited to gasoline, diesel, natural gas, electricity, or hydrogen to individual vehicles. And that, that's, the definitions in Article 15 of the zoning ordinance. That was a subject of discussion over a year ago before the city council in the, just want to find it here, in the April 18 meeting and also in the May 2 meeting of 2022. During the action was taken at the council meeting of May 2, 2022, on a unanimous, I'm reading now from the action items, quote, "On a unanimous roll call, 8-0, voted to approve and send the draft zoning ordinance amendments regarding electric vehicle charging stations to the planning board for review and recommendation back to the city council for first reading." Now, I'm, I'm not here to criticize or complain about this. I mean, I worked for a state government in a number of jurisdictions, so I do understand and know that you work for a municipality or state, you've always got more things on your plate than you can handle. Things that start out at the top of your desk kind of can fall to the bottom of the desk pretty easily. So I'm really here just to jiggle the handle, as it were. This is an important issue. If we're going to have a increased use of EVs in, in this region, welcome, welcoming people who come to the city, welcoming people who live in the city and may not have access to charging or can't put charging in their own homes, we really need to invest and allow these charges to be. So I would urge you to take a look at, at your past action and try to bring it before you to, to move this along. And with that, well, I've run out of time, so I'll skip the next thing I was going to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. That is correct. It does sit with the planning board still, so good jiggle of the handle there, along with Tom Morgan's recent op-ed. Going back to non-Portsmouth residents, we have Mark from the Park. The topic of Lee Greenwood.
Well, you liked my song so much last time, I brought you another one. How's that?
Looking forward to it, Mark.
I know you are.
It's a three-minute song.
You'll like this one.
Name and address?
Oh, Mark, just need your name and address.
Mark Brenner, Elliott, Maine. If tomorrow all the things were gone, I'd work for all my life. And I had to start again, just my children and my friends. I thank my lucky stars to be living here today, 'cause the flag still stands for freedom, and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee, across the plains of Texas. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee, across the plains of Texas, from sea to shining sea, from Detroit down to Houston, and New York to LA. Well, it's right in every American heart, and it's time we stand and say. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA.
Look at that timing, Mark.
There you go. Thanks for allowing me to watch, share the music with you.
Appreciate it.
Great timing.
Next up, David Petzer, instead of P, from Kittery on Kino. Did David leave? David might have left. Okay, I think he was probably in support. Next is we have a hand on Zoom. I believe Zoom has been crashing on us, but I think we had, it just crashed on us again, so.
Kevin can bring them up.
Kevin's going to work on bringing up, I think we have Rick Beckstead with a hand. All right. Bear with us, Rick. Can faintly hear you, former mayor?
Can you, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Floor is yours.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm calling in tonight to talk about the McNabb project. I just want to point out to the public and to the, and to the council that none of our land use boards gave any approval for this street proposal. So as far as a project such as this, as large of an ask as it is, I respectfully ask the mayor and the city council to hold a public forum meeting separate from this meeting. This is a very big ask. You're talking about not just getting rid of, getting rid of four or five parking spaces that are in favor of the developer, but this proposal needs to be advertised publicly. You had one or two people that spoke with concerns that are in that neighborhood. There is too many unforeseen variables there to even consider moving this process forward. I will go and also point out that when the Music Hall Street with Chestnut Street had gone through, there was several public process meetings before that was actually approved by the residents of Portsmouth and the city council. So I would respectfully ask at the end of the public comment to please suspend the rules and bring forward this item so that the public can be informed earlier than, rather than later this evening. And thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Rick. Any other hands on Zoom that we see? None. Okay, wait, none. Okay. That is all the speakers that I have under public comment. Next up, public hearings and vote on ordinance and or resolutions, unless there's a desire to bring something up before. Okay. The first is a public hearing. Second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 3, Boards, and Article 4, Commissions and Authorities. Sample motion would be to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the August 21st, 2023 City Council meeting. Do we have a presentation on this ordinance change? Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, this is a change that is coming from the Governance Committee. I would ask for the motion to be amended slightly before we move forward. The amend, because the current changes, we missed one change when it got put in the packet. That change was on page 2, the first paragraph, Section 1, 302D, the third line. There was one change there, replacing his or her with his/her there instead. That was the one that was missed before it went in the packet. So, so it's a minor change, but I need to make sure that everyone is aware of that. And I would, I would personally move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading on August 21st, at the August 21st, 2023 City Council meeting with said amendment to the ordinance. If I get a second, I will go ahead and give the presentation.
Second.
So these changes are coming forward from governance, really just to bring our language and our ordinance in line with modern standards. We changed all the references to chairman to chair in the language. We also changed references to his or he to he/she there to make sure that the language is inclusive within the ordinance. We also made one technical change to the ordinance, which is clarifying that the election of a chair for every committee should occur in the first meeting in January of the year. So, so that that is clear, because that was not consistent through the ordinance. So we wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone. So it's really a technical change and then bringing the language up to date, and that's pretty much all that this, these do.
Counselor Cook, any questions? And now is the presentation. Any questions for Counselor Cook? Just a quick legal inquiry. Just don't seem like major changes, and we confirm that those amendments that would be on as part of second reading don't constitute a change.
No, they're very minor.
Okay, we will open up the public hearing for the move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the August 21st. Public hearing, any public hearing speakers speaking on this proposed change? Seeing none, rise or on Zoom, I will close the public hearing. Any additional counsel questions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your Honor?
Counselor Denton?
I motion that we suspend the rules to bring forward third and final reading of this ordinance tonight.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we pass third reading of the said ordinance in front of us.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up, public hearing, second reading of omnibus ordinance amending Chapter 7, Vehicles, Traffic, and Parking. Amend Chapter 7, Article 3, Traffic Ordinance, Section 7.336A, colon, One Way Streets, 24, Rains Ave, Westerly from Vaughn Street to Maplewood Ave, 35, Vaughn Street northerly from Maplewood Ave to Rains Ave. Amend Chapter 7, Article 4A, Bus Stops and Taxi Cab Stands, Section 7A, Point 408, Taxi Stands Designated. The following areas are hereby designated or designed, designated, that's as taxi stands. A Pleasant Street, East Sterling Side, first parallel parking space north of State Street. Amend Chapter 7, Article 6, Speed Limits, Section 7.1100E, Speed Limits, 25 miles per hour, Section 7.1100, Speed Limits, E, Speed Limits, 25 miles per hour. Islington Street, Middle Road from Beverly Hill Road to Middle Street, Parrot Ave, Summit Avenue. Is there a presentation?
Your Honor, we have traffic engineer Eric Eby with a very brief presentation. Eric, do you want to?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric Eby, traffic engineer for the city of Portsmouth. And what we have before you for the traffic omnibus is the items that were voted on by the PTS committee over the course of the past 12 months and were voted on as temporary actions until going through the three reading process tonight. And they are one-way streets. I hope I don't mess this up.
I think my mouse works, Eric. Oh, good, good, good.
Okay, I'm just trying to, okay. So the first item is one-way streets, and these are Rains Avenue and Vaughn Street. These changes were made within the last year. This loop here around the AC Hotel. So going from near the railroad tracks up Maplewood, up Vaughn Street to Rains and out back out to Maplewood, this is now a one-way loop. And this was put in place to help with the traffic flow of the new developments along the street, and it appears to be working well. We have new one-way signs at this end, do not enter, as well as all the parking signs have been changed to make the flow one-way through the whole street. We are going to do some changes here at this intersection just to show that there's a left lane and a right lane. There's a little bit of confusion right now on that, but other than that, it's been working well. The next item is taxi stands. And so this is the map of the taxi stands in the downtown area that are being removed from the ordinances. There's just one taxi stand remaining, and that is on Pleasant Street and down in this area here, just off the map. The other ones have been removed, and most of them were a combination of loading zones or taxi stands. So with the taxi stand designation being removed, it is still either a regular parking space or loading zone the rest of the time. It's just taken out that restriction of being only for taxis after 7 o'clock at night. And these changes have been made, the signs have been changed, so the only taxi stand remaining is on Pleasant Street now. The next items are speed limit changes. The first one is on Islington Street, and it runs all the way from Maplewood, Congress Street in the downtown, all the way along Islington out to Route 33. And we made, PTS voted on a change from Spinning Road, which is right here, up to Maplewood at one time, making that permanent. Then we did a six-month trial on the remainder of Islington, and that just ended. And after that six-month trial, and it was actually a year, PTS voted to make that permanent 25 miles an hour as well. The next one is Middle Road, and that was changed from 30 down to 25 miles an hour, all the way from Beverly Hill Road, which is off the side down here, up to the Middle Street intersection. And this changed it from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. Again, that was, went under a six-month trial, and it's been now a year, and the speed limits were changed on a permanent basis by PTS. The next item is Parrot Avenue, Parrot by the middle school and the library. Had been unposted, which meant it was a 30 mile an hour street, so PTS voted to make that 25 miles per hour, the entire length, from Junkins down to Rogers. The next one is Summit, Summit Avenue, running from South Street to the high school gate. And that, like Parrot Ave, had been an unposted street with a 30 mile an hour speed limit, and this change made it a posted speed limit with 25 miles per hour, 25 being the lowest allowable per state law. And that is it in the omnibus.
Thank you very much, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Counsel questions more broadly? We will open it up to the public hearing. Anybody on Zoom? We have Roy approaching.
Roy Helsel, 777 Middle Road. We're 25 miles an hour, like for the last year or so, it was 25 miles an hour, but you very seldom see anyone go on that slow. They go 45 miles an hour and they pass you on the double lines. Why don't they make the whole city 25 miles an hour, put signs at the entrance of all the main roads in city, and then make the places like the hospital or by the schools, give them those signs other than the 25 miles an hour? People drive down the road, they just see, here's a sign that says 25, this one's 20, this one's 30. And we got a lot of visitors here. Make it easy. Everything 25 miles an hour, post that, and if any changes have to be made, they'll put a sign up that it's changed to a different speed. But you go down this street, it's 20 miles an hour. You make a right-hand turn, it's 30 miles an hour. You go down the next street, you turn, it's 25. You don't know what the speed limit is here, but nobody follows it anyway. And when they stop them, give them a warning ticket, put it in the computer, so if they stop them again, give them a ticket, whether they're a visitor or live here. Give them a ticket for about $200 so they'll stop speeding, because I can't even pull out my park, my street to get on the Middle Road, and these cars are coming down the road so fast that they pass me on the double yellow line. That's all I got to say.
Roy?
There don't seem to be any hands on Zoom.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. There's a certain street in town that comes to mind that actually isn't 25 miles an hour. It's still 30. And I'm trying to figure out why. Sagamore Avenue, from the intersection in town, all the way past the graveyard, on down to the bridge, it's 30 miles an hour. That's what it's posted. So I would think it would be a good idea, seeing as people have consistently been to parking, traffic, and safety, questioning it, maybe it too should be 25 miles an hour finally. That would be a great thing. Add Sagamore Avenue to the list, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jim Lee, 520 Sagamore Avenue, which I've learned that we have the distinction of being the only street in town that still has a 30 mile an hour speed limit. We hear, we see cars go by our house every day going at least 50 miles an hour, so, you know, I don't know if 25 is going to do any good or not, but I think having the police out there and write some speeding tickets would be a step in the right direction. And also, I agree with the previous speakers, I think we should be consistent on the speed limit. Speed limit in the whole town needs to be 25 miles an hour, and we need to have the police out there writing speeding tickets. That's part of what they do. So thank you for that, and have a good night.
Thank you, Jim. Any other speakers on Zoom arising? Going to close the public hearing. Just a quick point on Sagamore. That is a state road, so our ability to change the speed limit, I believe, is, takes a couple more steps. So that's why Sagamore is not on, and it might be the reason why we don't have all of them, but maybe our representative from PTS, Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, we did have a speed limits working group, where a couple volunteers and a couple of the traffic engineers kind of analyzed every street in town. In New Hampshire, being a Dillon's rule state, you can't set speed limits below 25 miles an hour, uh, below 30 miles an hour unless you do an engineering study showing that that is, been proven that it needs to be below 25 miles an hour. There's a lot of rules that I wish we didn't have to work with. I'd love the suggestion of a citywide 25 mile an hour speed limit. Unfortunately, we can't just do that. We have a lot of paperwork and processes to go through to do it in a way that's legally binding according to state rules. So we're working towards that, but one, we can't control state road speed limits because the state DOT does it, and two, we can't go below 30 miles per hour unless we do the engineering studies, and those take time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Counsel Bagley. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
You not have the motion? Don't have the motion? Okay. So I'd await a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the August 21st, 2023 City Council meeting.
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Can we, can I make a motion to suspend the rules and do the third reading?
Certainly can.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, public hearing.
I want to make a motion to do the third reading.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, public hearing, second reading of Ordinance Amending Chapter 7, Article 6, Loading Zones, Section 7.601, Limited Hour Loading Zones. We will get to the motion in a second. Is there a presentation on this?
Your Honor, both Peter Rice and Eric Eby are here to briefly explain the genesis of this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Peter Rice, Director of Public Works. Eric Eby is with me as well. The opportunity has arisen to rework some of the loading zones based on video monitoring and surveying the utilization. It was determined that loading zones were really not used after 3:00. And an opportunity to free up additional parking for our downtown residents and other residents and visitors was realized that it was a possibility. So there are 13 spaces, loading zones are identified here, freeing up 38 spaces. And that is really the genesis of this. It's been in place for about a year now. It's worked very well, and it's a positive thing. We feel it's something worth pursuing.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say quickly, thank you to the Department of Public Works, to our traffic engineer, and to the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee for coming up with this very innovative solution, because it did add parking downtown in our busiest hours in the evening.
Your Honor?
Counselor Bagley?
I'll just, it happened before I was on the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee, so I want to give the credit to the people that served there and Counselor Whalen.
Counselor Bagley? Any other questions or comments on this? Just note, I guess one clarification, this is already in effect because we passed it as a part of the action items. Is that correct? So just for folks watching at home, we go through a more formal process of codifying these. But when we do approve the minutes of the action items, in those minutes of a PTS meeting, we do approve the action taken on a temporary basis, so this is already in effect. It also allows us the time to look at it in effect before voting on it. But without any further comment, we will open the public hearing.
No hands on Zoom.
No hands on Zoom. Going once, going twice, closing the public hearing. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I would await a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the August 21st, 2023 City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to suspend the rules and bring forth the third reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to bring forth the third meeting. Do I have to read the whole thing?
Nope, third and final reading of the matter in front of us would suffice. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Almost through the public hearings. Public hearing, second reading of Ordinance Amending Chapter 7, Article 10, Towing, Section 7.1004, Towing or Immobilization of Motor Vehicles for Non-Payment of Parking Fines. Illegally parked accumulated unpaid parking violations in an amount in excess of $250 on any or all vehicles at any time registered to the owners of said vehicles as shown on the records maintained by the parking clerk. Notice, at any time subsequent to the accumulation of unpaid parking fines in excess of $250 on any or all vehicles at the time registered to the owner of any vehicle on the records maintained by the parking clerk, the parking clerk may send a notice by certified mail to the registered owner of said vehicle or vehicles at the address on the registration. Now, I think we have a presentation on this, but just, do we have a presentation? Or the presentation is just to state that we are increasing the limit that you can, you can get more parking tickets and not pay them before your car is immobilized? That's the gist of the presentation?
The limit is going from 125 to 250.
So we're doubling the limit to account for, I guess, higher parking fines in general, but that's the, that's the gist. Okay. Any questions on that brief presentation? None. Okay, we will open the public hearing. Please approach if you would like to speak to or against this, and I will look at Zoom.
There are no hands on Zoom, Your Honor.
No hands on Zoom, no one rising, closing the public hearing. Any additional counsel questions or deliberations? With that, I'd wait a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the August 21st, 2023 City Council meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd wait a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
And bring forth third and final reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to pass third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
I'm just letting Kelly catch up a little bit here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is the last one. Bigger one. Public hearing, second reading of Ordinance Amending Chapter 10, Article 5A, Character-Based Zoning, Section 10.5A20, Regulating Plan, Subsection 10.5A21.10, Contents of Regulating Plan, Map 10.5A21B, Building Height Standards, Section 100.5A43.30, Building and Story Height, Subsection 10.5A43.33, Section 10.5A43.40, Maximum Building Footprint, Subsections 10.5A43.41 through 44, and Section 10.5A45, Community Spaces, Subsection Figures, 10.5A45.10, Community Spaces, Section 10.5A46.20, Requirements to Receive Incentives to the Development Standards, Subsections 10.5A46.21 through 22, and Article 15, Definitions. Section 10.1530, Terms of General Applicability of the Ordinance of the City of Portsmouth.
Your Honor, we have Planning Manager Peter Stitt to provide a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councillors. As you know, this is the continued second reading from the July 10th meeting, where you had a larger presentation on the Planning Board's recommendations, and then voted to incorporate those changes, which were then re-advertised for tonight. I'm just going to give a brief summary of the amendments that include those changes. All right. So the existing density incentives in the character districts include parcels that are located in the north and west end overlay districts, provisions for large building footprints, and then for parcels that are over an acre in size. And currently, the incentives require community space or workforce housing. And there's only one type that currently has to go to the Planning Board for a conditional use permit, and that is for the larger footprint incentive. These proposed amendments will require community space and workforce housing, so it won't give them the option, you have to do both. And then all of the incentives will require a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. So I'm going to go through each of the sections here. First is the parcels over one acre in size. And these are outside of the overlay district, so they're not in the north end or the west end overlay districts. And they only apply to properties that are zoned CD4, CD5, or CD4W. The proposed amendments will allow an increase in height from 10 feet to 15 feet. They'll also allow a different house or duplex building type, which currently is not allowed. This would allow for development on these large parcels to recreate something like the hill, where it's not just one large building, but it could be multiple small buildings that are either houses or duplexes. For this incentive, you must provide 50% community space and workforce housing. And the workforce housing would be, if those units are for sale, we would require 10% of them. And if they're for rent, they'd be 5%. And then the Planning Board recommended a minimum size of 750 square feet. The original, the original language was 600 square feet, and at your July 10th meeting, you went back to that 600-foot minimum unit size. In these amendments, we're also calculating, or putting a provision in there that shows what happens if you have a fraction. And so if it's .5, it rounds down. If it's over .5, it rounds up. And then, like I said, it requires a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. And then there's also a reference throughout these incentives that the project must reference the consistency with the master plan. So moving on to the amendment for larger building footprint, this is the one that already requires a conditional use permit, but we've put in the provision for the requirement for workforce housing in addition to community space. And for developments that have five or less units, dwelling units, there's no requirement for workforce housing. However, there is a requirement for 30% for community space. And then when we get over five units, the community space drops to 10%. Uh-oh.
He's coming.
Kevin's coming back.
All right, well, I can.
Park, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Getting the steps in tonight. So, yep, so there'll be 10% community space and 10% workforce housing, if it's for sale, and 5% if it's rented. And then again, these are just continued, you know, the minimum size is 600 square feet, and the rounding, and as I mentioned, it does currently require a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. And then, let me see. So lastly, we have the west end and north end overlay districts. And in that, in these districts, there are two sections. Parcels that are located adjacent to or within 100 feet of the North Mill Pond, Hodgson Brook, or Piscataco River. Currently, they do not require workforce housing, and that continues to be the case. However, we're adding the requirement for a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. The 20% community space that's required is existing. So the big thing here is that it requires a conditional use permit. It's not an incentive as a right. And there was another change that added, and for really, for this section, the goal was to get the greenway along the North Mill Pond. So there was another amendment that added a setback from the greenway to adjacent buildings, so there has to be a 10-foot setback from that greenway. So for parcels that are more than 100 feet from the North Mill Pond, Brook, or River, we're adding in the required for workforce housing and community space. This is, has a little more to it, because developments with five or less units, you have to have 20% community space and no workforce housing, similar to the larger footprint one. But with more than five units, you have 10% community space and 20% for sale and 10% for rent. So that ratio increases. And then we have the same size requirement of 600 square feet, and requiring a conditional use permit from the Planning Board. In addition to these amendments, we've added four community, new community space types. And they're, sorry, they're a little hard to read. A pedestrian passageway on this, on this side. It's hard to see the little green area, but it goes through a building connecting a sidewalk to other community space in the development. And we added some dimensional requirements for the passageway. The other second type is a pedestrian arcade. This would be in overhang, it has to be at least 10 feet in width, but could accommodate outdoor dining or cover from weather. A shared multimodal way, what could, is a, this is similar to Chestnut Street or what just was approved for Two Russell. And then the last one is a, sorry, public observation deck, which could be a roof deck on top. It has to be at least 500 square feet. So some of these options account for vertical community space. Normally, we think of it as this horizontal square footage of a lot. This allows for projects to either to build over it or up above, such as the observation deck. And there's one change to the building footprint that would exclude, exempt uncovered community space up to 10 feet in height that would account for underground parking underneath it. So the space above it could then be counted as community space and would also be exempt from the building footprint calculation. And the final change with these amendments is the one change to the building height map. And this is the McIntyre property. Currently, most of it is in the green, which is two to three stories or 40 feet. But there's a section along Penn Hall and Bow Street that is two to three stories or 45 feet. We're proposing to change that to all green down here. But this could be, still be, use the density incentive and then go up to that 15 feet, because this parcel is over an acre, so it could still take advantage of that height. And that's that quick presentation. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to ask, answer.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions to the council? Counsel Lombardi?
Yes, in that, does the workforce housing on the sale of units, does that carry with the deed?
Yes, I mean, they would, so through the conditional use permit, they would work out a term. So there would be a covenant for certain, so it has to be at least 30 years.
Is that both for the rental and the?
For rental and for sale, yes.
Any other questions? With that, we'll open the, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. We'll open the public comment, public hearing. Counselor Moreau was quick to mouth and correct me that it was a public hearing. And the difference is, it's an unlimited amount of time, just ask that you keep.
It'll take an unlimited amount of time.
Three minutes in your heart and your head.
God, here we go again. McIntyre. All that we're going through right now, and you're looking at it for workforce housing. And so how does this affect us if someone is going to do workforce housing on a large parcel? Would all of McIntyre be workforce housing? Or would you just simply revert to what we are discussing right now? And when you talk about doing all of McIntyre workforce housing, and obviously, your inference, if the local papers are to believe, would be Portsmouth Housing Authority. Where does, thank you, Counselor Lombardi, where does that fall in? What happens to the property after 20 or 30 years? Does it all revert back to market rate housing for Portsmouth Housing Authority investors? Or does it stay forever workforce housing? How does that fit in with the current zoning ordinances that you're proposing tonight? I pose those questions to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Page. Any other questions? No hands on Zoom. We will close the public hearing. Any other counsel questions or deliberations? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the August 21st, 2023 City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Moreau?
I also would like to make a motion to move to amend, there was a Scrivener's error found, by the way, I move to amend the first two lines of Section 10.5A43- I move to amend the first two lines of section 10.5A, 43, letter E, to correct Scrivener's error by striking the words "the development should have at least 10% of." It was language left over that we missed from the previous or current zoning for the change. So by way of explanation, the first few lines of that section will read as amended. For development with more than five dwelling units, the dwelling units within a building shall be workforce housing units in compliance with state law for either. Just to make that clear, if I get a second.
Second.
So that's just to amend that one line. It's literally just striking out language that should have been previously struck out that we missed. Apologies.
Okay. And legal agrees, city attorney, that this would not have us bring this back as a third time around at second hearing?
Yes. It's a minor change, and it brings it consistent with the rest of the amendments.
Any further discussion? Thanks for all the work that went into, to this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now we have to do the actual motion, right?
Yes.
That was just for the amendment.
All right. This is on the actual motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading on August 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need, I need somebody to make the motion second, please.
Initially made by Council Moro, right?
And I think seconded by Counselor Blais.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Oh, that was the amendment, but I'm.
Both of them.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So just to avoid all doubt, we will just take that vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there any? Council Moro.
And if I might, I would love to suspend the rules to bring forward third and final reading of this, of these changes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that we move to pass third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now that we're on to the city managers' items which require action.
Your Honor, since we may be coming up on a break, I ask that we suspend the rules to bring forward item number 15A, because we have a member of the Sustainability Committee here, and this should only take two minutes or so.
Confident we're taking a break? All right.
There's lengthier presentations coming up.
15A, oh, okay. Yeah, all right. So there's a, a motion to suspend and a motion is seconded by Counselor Cook to bring up item 15A.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move that the city of Portsmouth submit a Soul Smart application, engage with Soul Smart consultants, and build a designation plan.
Second.
Both members of the Sustainability Committee spoke pretty thoroughly to this, Herb and John. I'll simply add or reiterate that Soul Smart is funded by the U.S. Department of Energy Solar Energy Technologies Office. It provides no technical assistance, no cost, technical assistance to local governments to expand solar energy use. There are four communities in the state of New Hampshire that have already utilized this. And as was stated, it's going to, the actual cost of the city will be the 30 to 40 hours such of the planning and sustainability department's time. However, the Sustainability Committee members that spoke tonight are both willing to work with them throughout the process. And one reason why I did ask Herb to stick around is in case we did have questions, we could suspend the rules from to answer. But I think it's pretty straightforward.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. All right, we will take a 10-minute recess, and we'll see if there's anyone with business in front of the council at a 10-minute recess. Thank you, guys. All right.
We're going to get through just, the city manager assures me her items are a minute each. And so we'll get through those and then on to the presentations.
Great, thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a request for an amendment to the lease agreement with aid's response of the seacoast. They occupy the fourth floor wing of the Seibolt Building and their lease is terminating on September 30th of this year. And both parties understand that at this point, we will not renew the lease, but we will go month to month in an effort to identify an appropriate space for them that maintains their below-market rental concerns. And whether that be in city space or alternative space, we will work together on that. And this one is in similar fashion to the matter we brought to you earlier this year with PPM TV working to find them more suitable space. They are amenable to this month-to-month terminology with 120 days' notice.
Is there a motion? We'd wait a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the amendment to the lease agreement as proposed in the agenda packet.
So moved. Second?
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a really quick question. Do we have any anticipated need date for the city to when the city needs that space?
We don't have a need date, no. We just knew, both parties know it was not appropriate to renew a full-fledged lease, but to go month to month.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Item number two is seeking approval for bike pedestrian easement for property located at 293 Beverly Hill Road, which now consists of nine total units, along with related site improvements dating back to approval, which was obtained by the planning board back in 2017. We are now honoring the planning board's recommendation to accept an easement for the future construction of the multi-use path along Beverly Hill Road. And the easement in your packet is what we're looking for approval on.
I'd wait a motion to authorize the city manager to accept and record a bicycle and pedestrian path easement deed in substantial similar form to the easement deed from Beverly Hill Estates condominium incorporated contained in the agenda packet.
So moved. Second?
It's so funny, guys. All right. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The third and final request this evening is for two easements related to what is commonly known as Lot 5 over on Bridge and Maplewood, now known as 70 Maplewood. On December 21st of 2022, the planning board granted eight KPH owner site plan approval for a four-story building with a penthouse along with 19 dwelling units, commercial space in the ground floor, and underground parking. There are two easements that are part of that approval. The first one is a wide pedestrian sidewalk easement with an area of 1,730 square feet, which connects to the existing sidewalks along Maplewood Avenue and Deer Street, which are but the property, and it's depicted in your package. The second easement is for a drainage easement onto its property, granting to the city the drainage easement on the property located at 163 Deer Street for the purpose of extending an existing 20-foot drain drainage easement along the full length of the property. That existing easement is in yellow with the proposed extension in orange in your packet. So there are two separate motions if I could ask for those.
I'd wait a motion to grant authority for the city manager to negotiate, execute, and accept and record the easement for public access and use of community space in a form substantially similar to the attached and to further authorize the city manager to negotiate, execute, accept, and record any amendment to the easement to add meters.
Meets.
Meets and bounds description of the community space after as built plans are completed.
So moved.
And further.
That's okay, we can mark more.
To grant the authority of the city manager to negotiate, execute, and accept the record, the drainage easement deed in form similar to the attached contained in the agenda packet.
I thought there were supposed to be two votes.
Are there supposed to, there needs to be two votes? There's one sample motion. Okay.
They're just split. Second? We'll keep it to the first one first.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had one quick question for the city manager. From the drawing, it was hard to tell whether or not the public access would be well-signed or obvious to the public. Could anyone provide any insight on that for me?
We will require that as part of the work to be done.
Thank you.
So this is for the motion ending at end, supposing we'll do.
Plans are completed.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd wait a motion.
We move to grant authority for the city manager to negotiate, execute, accept, and record the drainage easement deed in similar form to a attached in the package.
Second?
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And if I could have a motion to suspend the rules to bring up informational item two under section 17, or, sorry.
Well, if we just do the consent agenda, then we can.
No, I'm moving all the way to the end. In the break, in order, just to see if there's anybody still waiting, just section 17, item number one, report back re-Ruth Street property release. Suspend the rules to bring that item forward.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion now to bring that in. No, we can just bring that in forward. All right. City manager, would you indulge us with the report back from Ruth Street or the city attorney?
Sure, happy to. The memorandum from the legal department is in the city council packet, but for those that don't have the ability to access the packet, the legal department did a thorough report of the situation and reviewing the relevant deeds and plans relating to the end of Ruth Street. And in 1971, Emerson McCourt conveyed to the city in fee a section of Ruth Street extending toward North Mill Pond. Additionally, Mr. McCourt conveyed to the city a turnaround easement until such a time as Ruth Street is constructed to the water. What is not clear is how far the city's interest in Ruth Street extends toward North Mill Pond and what the city would retain following a potential release of the turnaround easement. It is therefore impossible to determine whether the public interest would be served by the release of any portion of the turnaround easement. As a result, release of this turnaround easement is not appropriate at this time unless and until a survey plan is prepared by a licensed surveyor, which details the extent of the city's right-of-way interest. And as a note to the council, the constituent who brought this issue to the council with an expression of seeking to maintain the landscaping that had been installed, we explained to that resident how she could go about requesting a license to handle that. And she understands what would be involved should she wish to pursue that. So at this time, no further action is recommended.
Thank you. Backs the regal agenda, I'd wait a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Oh.
I move to divide the question and separate section C out from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will vote on A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, section C, letter from Arlen Chafee Granite State Wheelers requesting permission to hold the seacoast century bicycle ride on September 23rd, 2023. I'd wait a motion to refer to the city manager with the authority to act.
So moved. Second?
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am going to recuse myself because this directly impacts an event, an organization that I'm on the board of is holding at that same day.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've heard from several members of the Ferry House Tour, which my daughter took care of, took part of in when she was at Little Harbor. And the bike path where there's going to be about 1,500 bikers going through is also directly on the area where the Ferry House Tour is. So my suggestion would be maybe we could ask the Granite State Wheelers if they would maybe take Pleasant Street instead of Marcy Street. That way, there wouldn't be any overlap between the elementary school kids and the bike tour.
Okay. I think that could be covered in with the city manager's authority to act. I also didn't this, didn't we do this last year?
We did.
With the, because I had a great time at the Ferry House Tour and I was there for like seven hours. It was, it seemed like it all went off. Well, I mean, I kid you not, like seven hours. There was dancing, there was a lot of Ferry House Tours. I almost worry about how long we're going to be there this time. Aurelia is crazy now with various, oh my God, just thinking about it. But I think we could accomplish and making sure health and safety are taken care of if we refer to the city manager with that authority to to act in the best interest for health and safety. Does that, does that seem?
Yeah, and I will add, and you might be pleased to hear this, but now that my daughter's in high school, I did not spend any time at the Ferry House Tour last year. So I didn't have firsthand experience, but I did hear from a handful of people that they thought it was a little too busy.
Okay, it's a fantastic event and want to make sure that they're all done safely. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, on to a presentation from Mark McNabb, McNabb Properties, regarding improvements plans for High Street, Lad Street, and Haven Court as part of the One Congress project.
Good evening, members of the city council. Marie Bode with McNabb Properties, and I don't know if our IT is going to work, but I'd like to approach you with a memorandum that will help you to follow some of the items that I'll be speaking to this evening, if that's okay.
Thank you.
I'm very happy to have followed the ferry tour comments and a little smiles on the faces of everybody this evening. For those of you that were able to join us for the site walk last week, thank you very much. I am here tonight with Mark McNabb, owner of the property as well as developer, and our full development team. We have Tracy Kozak from Arkove Architects, Terrence Parker from Terra Firma, John Shagnon from Haley Ward Engineering, and FX Breton with Breton and Burro Ruby. I don't know why I always feel like I have to do this microphone. I'm sorry.
You sound great.
Okay. So again, thank you for taking the time to join us last week and for Mayor McGeckren, who provided the opportunity to announce the objectives and also to answer questions and clarify the goal toward our beautification and infrastructure improvement project before you this evening. For those of you that received this package in the past, we have not made many changes. But for those of you that were not here in the audience, what we had presented to the city in our June 7th concept conversation was what we see as we would like to provide as a gift to the city of Portsmouth. Tonight, I'll start with just a brief opening of what we see from the McIntyre Center, walking down Commercial Alley to Lad Street, High Street, and up to Haven Court. As you can see from the photos that are depicted here, although maybe a little small, what we show on the left is what is a little inviting, coming down Commercial Alley, and then to the right, what is not so inviting, coming upon the do-not-enter one-way street of Lad Street. I'm sorry. What we also see is some of the uninviting trash, uneven curbs, broken sidewalks, no handicap accessibility. We have, I'm going to go back to my script, beyond the obvious, visually enhanced aesthetic improvements. You'll see and will be shown again this evening the underground work, which undoubtedly will cause impacts to those surrounding the sites. But as a butters commented in that site walk last week, some of the crumbling infrastructure that you won't see in our pictures either before or after were welcomed by those abutters at the Pierce Block, Mary Woods, et cetera. As has been articulated, this project provides connectivity to a broad range of otherwise now closed-off areas, which that last picture showed on Haven Court. The improvements are, excuse me. Additionally, throughout this evening, please remember, the improvements are not required for the already approved One Market Square redevelopment project. The existing building on the dimensions of, excuse me, the, I need to take two. I'm so sorry.
All right. We've got, you know, IT difficulties tonight, so it's tough going through presentations.
The existing building-to-building dimensions on High Street are only 31 feet. The city of Portsmouth Fire Department and street standards require a minimum of 20-foot-wide streets for safety. The existing sidewalks on High and Lad Streets vary in width from just three feet wide in places to four feet. As we mentioned at the site walk last week, the Americans with Disabilities Act, otherwise known as the ADA, enacted by Congress in 1991 with enforcement by the Department of Justice, established that public sidewalks must be five feet wide. And the city of Portsmouth prefers six-foot-wide sidewalks due to our snow removal equipment. Currently, there are no ADA compliant access down High Street or Lad Street or to get to the high-hit over parking garage. Parking on High Street was installed before the ADA became law. However, that does not absolve the city of Portsmouth to using reasonable efforts to be compliant now. Property owners are required to go through the Technical Advisory Committee, Planning Board, and the Inspection and Fire Departments for their plans, and for those plans always require ADA compliance. With these baseline parameters, I'd like to introduce Tracy Kozak from Arkove Architects to walk you through some of the site improvements that the development team has put together and will be available to speak more to the proposal and answer questions as we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Tracy?
Hi, thanks for having us again. I know you've heard this a couple of times already. Just wanted to fill in a few gaps and questions perhaps that you might have and also take a step back to the big picture, why this matters. And I want to show you, well, let's go to the overall here. This is my favorite one. It doesn't look as pretty as the other ones, but this is really what it's all about. It's about connectivity. It's about pedestrian-friendly spaces and creating a vibrant and safe and inclusive community. It goes back to a lot of the tenants in the master plan of the city of linking our city together. And this is, yes, that works. Okay, so here's the McIntyre Commercial Alley. We all love that. Here, it gets kind of sketchy. Get to the Worth Lot and the Bridge Street Lot. As you know, there was a nice master planning effort a few years back to make that into a nice green space. There's been a lot of talk about the Worth Lot and Von Malls has seen lots of improvements. It's just this little part in the middle that is scary, honestly. Just, it just is. There's been some terrible crimes and it's blocked off for safety. It's dark. It's decrepit. So we'd like to make it better at no cost to the city is the short story. There are lots of details here about how this is proposed to be done, and this would be in collaboration with the city and the public. For the details and technicalities of how this all works, as Marie mentioned, it includes a complete rebuild of the underground infrastructure, which is failing and causing issues to some of the surrounding buildings. The pavement is broken. The sidewalks are disheveled and too narrow. The lighting is inconsistent. That would all be addressed here with overhead lighting, pavers on the streets, flush curbs. I think you've heard some of the details. Down Lad and High, there would be designated loading zones with landscaping and greenery, where currently there's none. And one thing we would encourage to be considered, which is not part of this, but it could be the consolidation of, oops, off-site trash collection. This is going the wrong way. There is a large dumpster at the top of the hill on Haven, which is kind of unsightly. It blocks traffic, and this isn't going backwards. Let's try that. Nope. I broke it.
Kevin's coming.
It would be great if we could get the trash off of the public way and off-site. Yeah, I'm trying to go back. Yeah, I'm trying to go backwards.
Bottom one.
Yep. There we go, thank you. All right. Scrolling back, okay. All right. There. So this is the beginning of the upper part of the hill of Haven Court, which is by Newberry's, and there's a dumpster, and then the concrete barriers, so there's no access, and it's unsightly, it smells bad. There are people that sometimes use a window in the Hanover Garage, and they hop over onto a bucket. So all of this could be transformed into more of the experience that you currently have on Commercial Alley and some of the more developed areas of town, which are more pedestrian-friendly and safer. This is a detail of the railing that goes up that steep ramp by Gillies, and this would be an ADA stairway. It's not an elevator, but it would have safe handrails and guardrails and steps that would make it a visually appealing and safe journey up that slope. Handicapped accessibility could be accommodated at the top of the hill through the Hanover Garage, which would remain open to pedestrians. There is no proposal in this application to change any traffic patterns in this area. Access to the garage would be maintained at this point. Nothing is proposed to be blocked off. We would encourage that to be considered by the city, perhaps in a separate and future study of how that would work. Right now, we really just want to make this safe, inclusive, vibrant, and beautiful. This is the view from Market Square, looking down High Street. You can see the flush, cobbled pavers, the catenary lights, the view from the High Hanover Garage, looking back at the steeple, and from Market Street, looking down Lad. Again, the same consistent treatment of the paving, the flush curbs and the catenary lights, landscaping, and at the top of the hill, this is where the dumpster is currently, gradual steps that go down the slope with lighting and seating and landscaping. And a view from Fleet Street towards Newberry's, and a view through, there'd be a smaller street arch along Fleet Street, looking up the stairs, along the railings and ramps to the hill beyond. Again, this would connect from Fleet Street, potentially the Worth Lot, all the way across the Commercial Alley to the McIntyre, and at night. And I believe that's, there is a video here, but it's not working. And there is a separate file that was submitted with a PowerPoint where the video does work, so I encourage you to check that out.
You're getting help.
Okay, yeah. We do have the full team here, if you have any technical questions about any of these elements we discussed. Be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. There are questions from the council. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. My question is something that's been brought up a couple of times, which is the trash receptacles. I know that the proposal is essentially, the trash gets moved onto city property, potentially in the Hanover Garage. Are there alternative design options that you guys have thought of in case that isn't a proposal, that, you know, the businesses? I think a lot about the Thirsty Mill. We keep saying J.J. Newberry's, but really the biggest tenant in that area that uses those trash cans, and most of the time are several times a week pickups are the restaurant that's right there.
Between the Hanover Garage and behind the gas light, kind of in that?
No, no, I'm talking about on Haven Court, the trash on the top.
Right, those dumpsters, yeah. Well, so right now, this proposal has that there. It could be screened and pushed to the side a bit. It would be great if, as a city, there, as an urban city where there's zero lot line development, if there was a more collaborative approach to dealing with trash, to get it underground or out of the way, out of the public way. It's a real mess on trash collection day, I know. It would be great to do that. We'd be in full support of finding a collective way to do it. The project this developer's doing on his own, the One Congress, has their own trash underground in the parking garage, so that is contained. But all the existing properties in the neighborhood still have the issue of what to do with trash. It's really a downtown problem throughout, and it would be fantastic to think of it holistically together. Is there some common place that it could go?
Any other questions? Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I just have some comments. It was nice of Peter Loughlin, who was very involved with the Market Square redesign, to speak tonight, and I think everybody recalls that it was a community development block grant that paid for a lot of that and some other funding. We have a chance to do more pedestrian in the area, and instead of a block grant, we have a developer that wants to pay for the cost. There is, however, it's been brought up a number of times, there's the three 15-minute parking spaces, and the two "park as long as you want" parking spaces, for a total of five spaces. I was able to get some parking revenue numbers for those five spaces. Last year, they generated $17,384, so roughly $20,000 a year in revenue. If we were to do a million-dollar worth of improvements with the paving, the sewer replacements, which I think everybody that was on the site walk realized that they're gonna have to happen sooner rather than later, that's about 50 years' worth of parking revenue it would take to pay for those improvements. So I think we can not look at this as a revenue loss from the parking if we match that up with the gains that we'd get in infrastructure. I do also want to point out that, much like most of the on-street parking downtown, the occupancy rate of these is extremely high. So the 15-minute spaces generate a lot less parking revenue, because people are often pulling in and pulling out, and they can't do stay-and-pay, and sometimes people just chance it, because they're running in for five minutes. So the revenue doesn't tell the whole story. These are highly utilized parking spaces, some of the highest utilized in the city, so it is a trade-off, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there for everybody to process, because I know there's been some confusion. Is it three spaces? Is it five spaces? Are they 15 minutes? Are they permanent?
Councilor Bagley. Councilor Tabor.
Question, the, it was unclear at our site walk, and thank you for doing the site walk. It was great to see actually what's gonna happen and hear from the Butters. It was stated that the developer is gonna do the improvements to the road, and the sewer, and the drainage. So how's that gonna work? In other words, who's accountable if there are sewer problems? Who's accountable if the drainage doesn't work?
Who's gonna answer?
If I answer it wrong, I'll give it to John. The way that works is it'll work no different than every project we do in the city of Portsmouth. The improvements will be bonded through the site review agreement, and they'll be inspected by the City of Portsmouth Public Works. They inspect their drainage, their water lines, their infrastructure lines, and they inspect them that they're built to the plans, and we provide engineered drawings that they're built to the plans. That's a normal process that we would do if we were rebuilding it, and you don't get your bond back until the city says they're built in accordance to their plans. Then from that point, they're part of the city's infrastructure, and the city repairs them like they would any other ones, once they accept them.
Okay.
Councilor Boyler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for this presentation. I know I've seen some of this on the HDC, but just for the public, it's not really a concern whether I'm gonna vote on this tonight, but I know the public would just like to know how long would a construction project like this take. Obviously, that's the most inconvenient part of any project like this, is the construction, but just to give the Butters, to give people that enjoy the downtown an idea, do you have any sort of ballpark?
Approximately 18 months.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Cook. Thank you, Your Honor. As you all know, I'm concerned about ADA accessibility, specifically to the platform space, which is, would not be accessible from either side of this project, but could be accessible from the garage. I'm just wanting to know if the developer would be willing to pay for accommodations for a door opening in that garage space, so that there is accessibility through the garage for someone who, because we already have that project paid for, we've already financed the project for the Hanover Garage, and I don't think that that was in the original plan.
The doorway at the top of the hill to the garage, is that, yeah, that is something that would be very desirable to the project, and it's something that's been talked about, but it is purely at the city's whim, if you'd like this, but we think it would be great, because it's already used that way. It's similar, like, when they, when I went to college, there was a campus, and all the sidewalks went like this, and we're like, why did they go like that? Well, they just planted grass everywhere and let the students go where they needed to, and then paved it. That's sort of what's happening. People are already doing this, so it makes sense to make it an actual door. But yeah, that would be great. Also, though, it is accessible to get to the top of that hill from the intersection of High and Lad, because there are no steps. It's a bit of a hill, but, so it's a ramp. If you don't want to do a ramp, you want to go completely level, then yes, one would go into the Hanover Garage, take the elevator, and go flat across.
Sorry to tag-team, but to interject from our site walk last week, when Mark presented that as a concept, we all witnessed the person who jumped over and jumped on the drywall bucket, and while it wasn't in our plan to pay for that, we support that, and Mark has just confirmed that he would. It would obviously require additional support from the city on the removal of that one parking spot, or perhaps two within the garage, but we do believe that that is a natural occurring, I think, as Ian Weidman had spoke at the site walk as well, for people that just want to get through when there's inclement weather. So we support that and would do that.
Thank you. I have one follow-on question, too. It's a separate issue, actually. I've looked at the landscaping in this space, and I just had a question about tree cover, if there's any plans for any trees within the space. I've noted that lately downtown, there's actually quite a bit of sun and heat, and people seem to be hiding under awnings quite a bit on hot days, so I didn't know if there was any plan for some kind of overhead shading.
So I'll introduce Terrence, but I believe that the plans that are presented thus far are conceptual, and we've tried to add color and pops of plantings. Again, as you've seen with any of Mark's properties in town, we are abundantly floral, so I don't know specifically about trees, but I'll let Terrence answer.
Hi there. Terrence Parker, TerraFirma Landscape Architecture. So presently, we have proposed trees at the, on Lad Street, right over by the stairway. There are none presently from Haven Court section up to the top of the Gillies Hill. It's very narrow there. There's actually a fair amount of shade from the Newberry Building and the proposed Congress Street Building, so we are proposing to landscape the edge, because there's vehicles in and out of there all the time, right? So we're proposing to landscape the edge of the parking garage, and we could plant vines, so it's green up there. But it's really quite a narrow space, and there's abundant shade, because it's, you know, it has that south angle until the sun moves around west, and then you get a full, you know, solar movement up from the west. And that's why we actually put the seating area on that top area, because it's actually pretty, it's surprisingly sunny, you know, late in the afternoon. But there are no trees there, because it's really narrow, and we have to get vehicles in there. So we were gonna plant the edge of the parking garage and maybe grow vines up on the side of the parking garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, it's good to speak to the motions, so, the weight of motion to approve the work proposed in concept, subject to the staff reporting back with a memorandum of agreement between the city and the developer that identifies the rough scope of work and the needed legal documents to proceed with that work, to be approved by the city council and executed by the city manager.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so just setting some ground rules for what this would actually accomplish, because I think that's probably the biggest question that folks have, you know, what is this accomplish? What can it not accomplish? Is can it accomplish if, you know, the, if buildings that have access, I'm thinking specifically in Haven Court, if there's not a way to have a meeting of the minds of those two private interests, that would obviously have to happen for this to move forward? Is that a fair legal, is that a legal understanding? Like, the Newberry Building, which would, has access onto Haven Court, or easements onto Haven Court, they would have to approve these plans, or no? Marie?
So Mr. Mayor, may I read the citations of the 14 or 13 items that we've included in our package, that I think will answer a lot of the questions that may come forward through the negotiations to get to the joint use agreement, et cetera? So, item number one, approve the plans as submitted, which includes removal of approximately five parking spaces on High Street, and enter into a joint use agreement with the city of Portsmouth and the developer for Haven Court. Number two, the parties agree the approval of this specific plan does not prevent the city from making any changes in the future. The plan is for improvements at this point in time, and may be changed by the city of Portsmouth anytime after completion and acceptance of the improvements. Number three, the intent of these public way improvements is primarily for beautification, making Lad and High Street compliant with Americans with Disabilities Act, and to upgrade subterranean utilities. Number four, there's no loss of any existing use to private property owners. We shall, excuse me, no loss of any existing use to private property owners shall occur, including parking, access to buildings, or travel ways. Access to buildings will be made as compliant as possible with ADA, and in no case will any building access be worsened than today's existing conditions. To the best of the knowledge of the parties, the only loss of function from these improvements will be losing the five parking spaces on High Street. Number five, all improvements, including engineering and design fees, shall be paid by the developer, and the city is not responsible for any of these costs. We will add in tonight the addition of that doorway into the Hanover High Garage. Number six, the Portsmouth, the city of Portsmouth will waive any and all fees, including license agreements, to encumber the public way during construction. Number seven, the developer will bond, as Mark said, the improvements to the public way as part of our site review agreement and bond amount. Number eight, the developer shall obtain approval of the private property owners to connect the overhead catenary lights to their buildings. In the event any private property owner denies that approval, then the overhead lights will be omitted from that section. Number nine, and I think this was addressed earlier, there will be no changes to the High Hanover Parking Garage. The city of Portsmouth will, we hope, agree to study and use their best efforts to include a trash and recycling area within the High Hanover Garage, or outside the High Hanover Garage, on city-owned property for the use of the surrounding property owners, with such users potentially helping to pay for that. The city of Portsmouth then agrees to hire an experienced third-party land planning firm and traffic engineer to study the three entrances at High Hanover Garage, and to consider any changes that result of the study. Number 11, the city of Portsmouth consider making a pedestrian entrance, which we've just concurred with. Number 12, the final construction documents will be mutually approved by the parties. Number 13, and the last one, the city of Portsmouth and the developer successfully complete a construction mitigation and management plan, the CMMP that we spoke of last meeting, to ensure that the parties' abilities to maintain access to the private property owners and to the High Hanover Garage. The parties understand that High Street and Lad Street will be closed for periods of time when construction is underway. However, we will do all that we can with the However, we will do all that we can with the city's assistance to ensure that there is two-way traffic on the then-closed street, whether it's high or lad alternating. So with that, we would respectfully request your vote in support of this measure.
Thank you, Marie. Assistant Mayor?
Thank you.
Do we have the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Number six, the city will waive any and all fees, including license fees, to encumber, obviously that will be discussed more. My concern would be, this project is going to happen at the same time as One Congress, and so, I guess, how would we know if encumbrance is to benefit One Congress or the Lad-Haven Court project, therefore, we could be waiving fees that really are to go towards the improvements of One Congress?
So, I'd like to step back to what Counselor Bagley commented with regards to the overall expense of this project, the engineering, the design, the infrastructure. We are making improvements way beyond what is necessary for our property, and I would say that it's a compromise, it's a request, and one that we believe is far outweighs whatever license fees might otherwise be for a project. There's a mutual benefit here, and as those of you that were on the site walk last week, Lisa DiStefano, who's with Miguel Architects, Miguel DiStefano Architects, was commenting about how their basements and everything are crumbling, and that there's water infiltration into their units. I don't believe that there would be a negative outburst if the city were to waive the fees as is requested, given the public benefit for that entire area.
Let me just add also, we're not looking to waive any fees with our building. We're paying a full building permit fee, we're paying everything associated with our One Congress Street, we're paying. This is just your license fees encumbering the public way, and there's really no logical way we could separate and say, hey, listen, for this month's scope of work, it would have been just our underground electric, and for these three months, it's replacing drainage, and for these two months, it's the sidewalks, and for these three months, it's the grading. The vast majority of this work in the street, the vast majority, 90% of it, is clearly work that doesn't have to happen for our project. So, in that spirit, the license fees associated in the public ways, it would just be a real rub to pay millions of dollars of improvements, and then turn around and pay the city $50,000 or $100,000 of license fees for encumbering the public ways. But it's not our private development. Our private development will pay the full building permit and fees associated on that project.
Thank you.
I guess I have a, will we, did you have a question?
Your Honor, I don't have a question, I just had a few comments about things that I want to make sure are addressed as we move forward. One of the things that I want to make sure that we're cognizant of in going into the CMMP process is that the city has an eye to our Market Square redesign plan, and making sure that the planning in this project, which will be executed around the same time we're actually doing our planning, the planning for this project will be taking place, that it dovetails well with that Market Square redesign plan, so that there's not an abrupt change in surface matter, or something that would look inconsistent with what's going to happen at Market Square ultimately. So, that takes some, I guess, some belief in the process, and knowing that we will get there, but I want to make sure that we have a consistent design, that it's, that it looks inviting if we move forward. So, that needs to be part of that discussion. I also think that it's really important that we make sure that once excavation begins, that there is, there is no way to halt the process. We don't want to get to a place where we've started in the CMP process, we need to be clear, that once excavation of the street occurs, that we can't back out of the process, because at that stage, the city would incur significant expense that would be unexpected. So, I know that the developer here anticipates all of those things, and I realize that he knows that those would be typical requests that we would have in place. I just want to make sure that the public knows that we would have those expectations in going into the CMP process, CMMP process. Thank you.
Counselor Cook? I guess I have a process question that I didn't really think of until before the, and I appreciate, I guess I'll start with, appreciate, and I think it's helpful to understand, the parties agree under two, the approval of specific plan does not prevent the city from making any changes in the future. There's not a world in which we can, we can give up rights to be able to change city streets in the future, especially as a plan might come forth, and I think that speaks to Counselor Cook's question, that there's not a covenant that we can land there that would do so. But, city attorney, do we have the authority, I know we have the authority to reuse or change the use of parking spaces, does the council have the authority to, without going, at least getting the recommendation from PTS around the parking spots, do we have the authority to just carte blanche eliminate them without a change?
I think in prior discussions, we've talked about it being referred to PTS for that purpose, to get a referral back, similar to the referral to the planning board for a recommendation.
Okay, we have the recommendation from the planning board?
Right.
Already?
Right.
And that's a conceptual plan, that we're on board with the idea of the concept, provided the legal documents can work, the idea of this working out would be a conceptual plan that's set into stone with memorandum of understanding, but we would, we'd need to move it to PTS as well for their report back. Or Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would, I wouldn't think we would need to go to PTS if it's a planning process, because in redesigning a space, for example, if we redesigned Market Square, we wouldn't be going to PTS and asking them their opinion on changing the whole, like, reconfiguring anything in Market Square, if that's part of a planning process, would we?
I don't know that it's absolutely required, but it is, has been the practice when a project involves or impacts parking, so that would be up to the council, if you wanted to send it to PTS for their recommendations in regards to the parking spots. And I think you asked me earlier a question I haven't had a chance to answer yet, in regards to the Newberry property, or the property?
Oh, yeah.
Behind the Newberry Building. I think in the process of putting together our joint use agreement and listing out in the memorandum of agreement, we would also need to get the owners of that property to the extent that they have an ownership interest in the portion of Haven Court to sign on with their agreement to the changes to Haven Court. So, they would need to become part of our agreement with the developer.
Okay. And that's the owner of the, or the representative body, if it's an LLC, they would have to sign on?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So, and I think, you know, the idea here, here's a list that they're putting forward tonight. I think the idea of the motion is that we would be working on this list, generally, if you approve all these concepts, the memorandum of agreement, joint use agreement, all the licenses and easements, the legal documents, we would work on with the developer to implement each one of these portions of the agreement, along with the scope of work that would be more specific, that would come back. The memorandum of agreement would come back to the council for its approval and authorization for the city manager to execute the legal documents when appropriate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Yep.
I think it's fair to say we all received this document tonight. I just want to clarify with the city manager, with the city attorney, that by voting to work on a memorandum of agreement, that doesn't necessarily agree to the terms that were just handed to us. It means we're going to talk about the breadth and scope of all of the items in that memorandum of agreement. Is that correct?
That could be your vote. You could vote to agree to everything here, or vote for us to, as staff, continue to negotiate with the developer and come back with a memorandum of agreement that we've all agreed to, or give us some guidance as to any of these that the council does not wish to approve.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment from the developer's perspective on one thing that was said?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is FX Bruton, I'm with Bruton &amp; Barrowby, I'm representing Mark, obviously, and I appreciate what Susan's saying. We've worked quite a bit on a framework for how we could proceed more on the legal side, and obviously, that will come back to all of you to take a look at and approve or discuss and go through that. I just want to kind of reserve, and I guess maybe Susan would agree, that she and I could further discuss the legal need for the Newberry Building to be part of that agreement. We've worked with them, we've explained everything to them, they haven't objected to anything. They have a very limited easement right there, which we completely respect, and we always have, and we've brought that all the way through the planning board, and specifically meeting with them in person. So, I just want to say, I guess, just so this council understands, if it came back, and after we went through that discussion, that they weren't part of that, then you would at least understand that we would have a discussion about that, and obviously, the city's legal department, if they think it's necessary, that's why it will come back. But my sense is it might be a little bit different, but again, I'm just saying that so when you finally see the document, you might at least understand that could be a possibility.
Okay. It seems like, just in terms of the, making sure, in the event that they wouldn't be a party to the documentation, they would somehow, rather than not say anything, they would have to be affirmatively supporting, or do you believe legally this could happen without their affirmative support of the plan?
We wouldn't want, we would want their affirmative support, and that's what we've always sought. So, I'm kind of like, I don't even want to get to that point, because I don't think it's even a possibility, because we have worked with them throughout this very lengthy process. But again, I guess what I would say, the answer, the best answer is, I'd like to have further discussions with Susan to see if that's actually necessary. I guess that's my really only point. If she believes it is, then that's the way it's going to be for you guys, and I understand that. I'm just saying, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about that point.
Okay.
But again, it's going to come back to you with the city's recommendation, not mine, obviously, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You'll get to the right point, I imagine.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I, I'll put my PTS hat on. I don't think that we need to, as the council, refer it to the PTS, but I already have had PTS members reach out to me, asking if we could take a look at it as a committee, and I don't think that's a terrible idea. So, I might move to amend that we refer the parking question to the PTS committee for a recommendation. That being said, I don't think it's required, because with outdoor dining, I don't believe that ever went to the PTS. But I think what we're doing here tonight, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is we're basically saying, yes, we want to proceed, or no, everybody's wasting their time and this project is dead. We're not saying, yes, this is exactly how we're going to proceed, and it's laid out as it is today, it's just that, yeah, the council is generally in agreement that this is a good plan, and we should continue to hash out the details.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, Counselor Bagley. I think it would be, I think it would be prudent from a standpoint of, around the parking, you know, so there could be a plan that would come up with this, you know, to mitigate the loss of that, and more broadly stating, but I think that, you know, the improvements at, you know, walking the, walking the site was helpful, having the conversation with the tenants. There was, you know, in a butter here today that expressed concerns over, you know, what exactly would happen to the buildings, more so from a traffic standpoint, so having the understanding of what that would likely be from a PTS impact, probably be a helpful conversation to have for getting those fears allied, and that's the goal that we're trying to have. I think, you know, for me, having Peter Walkland, who's been here for a really long time, sorry, I should have passed the gavel, but just having Peter here, who has seen Portsmouth from a very long, he's probably going to get pissed that I'm saying such a long time, but having a perspective of what Portsmouth was like when, you know, my dad was growing up here, and his, as full-throated as I hear Peter get in terms of a project like this and an opportunity like this to redefine an area of the downtown, I think there's a lot of support for that. There are a few really big details, especially with the butters and legal documents, but I was happy to hear that it's agreed upon, that any change that we make as a city is a point-of-time change that we make, and future cities can unmake, or future councils can unmake the best-laid plans that we have, but I think the work that's going into it is worth having more. I would have hesitancy, not being a lawyer, although sometimes thinking, you know, I Google something, I know what I'm doing, but having this on us without a legal response to it, to be able to agree to all of this, I think what we can agree to, or what the motion represents is a pathway forward, understanding what the project is, I don't think that legally I want to agree to every.
This is, yeah, I would say this is not for you to agree to a legal document, it's the concepts that are laid out here, and if you have, you know, some strong disagreement with any one of these, you should let us know, so we can have that in our negotiations and drafting a further detailed legal document for you.
Okay. Counselor Merle?
I just want to make sure that our idea of sending it to PTS would be to do that in connection with the moving forward of the talks and the negotiations, so that one's not reliant on the other. I just want to make sure that that's very clear. We can send it and get their opinion, which goes to legal, who's working on it in the background, that's all.
Yeah, I think Andrew controls the, do you control the calendar there?
Does he? Does he?
I don't know. But I think having that in conjunction with, I don't think we would wait to have this back. I think having the conversation would be a positive conversation that could best, you know, it would, ultimately, I want to hear from PTS before we approve a final contract, because if they're pointing out something, you know, that is something we haven't thought of, then I want to know that, but I think having it in conjunction would be a positive thing. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Okay, so the motion, I will re, move to approve the work proposed in concept, subject to the staff reporting back with a memorandum of agreement between the city and the developer that identifies the rough scope of work and the needed legal documents to proceed with that work, to be approved by the city council and executed by the city manager, I think. Counselor Bagley, did you move to amend that?
Just that we would also refer to PTS for their opinion.
Okay. And so, that's a motion, or that's an amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
And to speak to it, we could put it on the next PTS agenda, so I think everything would happen concurrently.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment to add, send to PTS as well?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
You're opposed, okay. Now the motion as amended, move to approve, yeah, motion is amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. Next is a letter from Rick Chelman, stating the support of the planning board for the conceptual plan that we also concurred with. I don't concurred with. I don't think we need to do anything with that letter.
No, we did that the last meeting. We had stated that that support had been made.
Your Honor, I think, if you don't mind, from legal or city manager, a point of clarification, as one of the speakers earlier said that this project should go before the land use boards, but it's my understanding, because it is a city-owned street and an improvement project, that this would not need to go in front of the planning board. Is that correct?
That's correct. All the matters that would pertain to the land use boards have been heard and approved by them. So at this point, we're just dealing with items in the public realm.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Should have started with that question.
Yeah.
Trying to get in there.
Email correspondence, I'd wait a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A letter from Jerianne Bogus, Black Heritage Trail, 60th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s March on Washington, requesting permission to use public spaces for a march for Memorial Bridge and a ceremony at the African Burying Ground Memorial on Saturday, August 26. Coming right up. A weight of motion to refer to the city manager with authority to act.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A letter from Paul Timmerman, Raid on Fort William and Mary, requesting permission to hold an event on December 14, 2023, and December 15, 2023, in recognition of the 250th Revolutionary War anniversary. I'd wait a motion to refer to the city manager with authority to act.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A letter from Kara Sweeney, Betty's Dream, requesting to enter into a payment in lieu of tax pilot agreement regarding 75 Long Meadow Lane. I'd wait a motion to move to refer to the legal and assessing departments for report back.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, sorry. Never mind.
No, I was just curious as to...
Take that vote back, I guess.
Yeah. Just had a quick question for the city attorney. I know it's moving to legal and assessing, but I guess where did this come about? Like, where, is it, I'm just curious, where, did they propose it, or is it something that's changed in the law?
I, I don't know what the genesis is. I assume that they proposed this, and it's being referred to legal to look at the details.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the former board chair of a nonprofit who dealt with a tax challenge, it was extremely expensive for our large nonprofit to produce all the documentation required to retain our nonprofit status. Knowing what that takes and knowing that these are very small nonprofits, I would love to have information, report back on what the requirements are for our nonprofits in the city to prove that they have nonprofit status for tax purposes.
Let's comment on that. So that's become a hot topic this year with our city assessor and the nonprofits due to some decisions from the BTLA. So there are some very specific requirements that in the past haven't been aggressively enforced, that are now being aggressively enforced for a particular documentation in order to maintain that status. And there are specific deadlines that have to be met. There wasn't a lot of lead time advising the nonprofits of that deadline. So some have missed them, and some just have not been able to put together the documentation. But we can put together a memo outlining those, if that's what you're looking for.
Yes, thank you. That would be actually really helpful.
Any other questions? And we will have the vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, letter from Renee Sullivan, Friends of Lafayette House, requesting to enter into a payment in lieu of tax pilot agreement for Friends of Lafayette House. I'd wait a motion to refer to legal and assessing departments for reports back.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Letter from Gary Bellul, requesting landscape license for 232 South Street. I'd wait a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and grant a landscape license to property owners at 232 South Street to construct and maintain landscaping at 232 South Street as described in the city council agenda packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fall into the council agenda here. Okay, first, under my name is the McIntyre Status Update, I will, I guess I should, I'll pass the gavel to the assistant mayor. And I would make the motion to direct our city staff to pursue the transfer of the McIntyre property for the purpose of converting the commercial space into workforce housing. If I get a second, I will just...
Second.
So there is a, a lot, 20 years of this building, a lot that's kind of hard to go completely through at 10:22 in the evening. But what I'm not really looking for in support of this motion is a conversation about our past. There's been many that have asked, how much money have we spent on, on McIntyre, you know, over the 20 years? That's a great question. I've been counting my, you know, time thinking about it at zero. Otherwise, you know, I've, you know, four years is almost every day thinking about it in some way, even if it's just being thankful I forgot about it for a day. But recently, we were approached by a lobbying outfit through a citizen request, and to look at this in a new light. And was surprised to find that legal, you know, didn't kind of turn it out out of hand. And then, in trying to figure out what we would do at the site, I, I am struck by the changes that we just approved. And the changes that we just approved to zoning, while not focused on the McIntyre, would deliver 5% of units for workforce housing at the site. And when I think about that, I think, you know, if we're going to keep the vibrancy of our downtown, and I think, you know, I wasn't misquoted in the paper, I just misspoke. It's not about whether or not a town is, you know, is too, just full of, you know, very wealthy people or not. But a town like Portsmouth needs a balance. And the market is not going to deliver that balance to us. We're lucky enough now that the Biden administration has made some recent changes to how they're looking at surplus property and directing the GSA to do so as well, the agency that would ultimately be responsible for doing this. They've indicated that there's a lot more federal funding from the infrastructure or the Inflation Reduction Act that could be available. All of those things, I would like to find out and give a definitive answer to Portsmouth, that this is what it's going to cost. But I do not have those numbers. What I would like to state right now is that if we could move forward with the idea that workforce housing would be an economic development champion there, that our town needs that, both for the vitality of just our downtown from a cultural perspective, but also from an actual business perspective, this is the highest use that I can think of to keeping Portsmouth the type of town that I grew up in, and the type of town that attracts so many people. So many people come to love to Portsmouth. We've been a victim of our own success in terms of the affordability of the downtown. And I think if we modeled it after a Ruth Griffin-style approach there, where the workforce housing unit's starting at $1,027, $1,027 a month, that's something that we could really attract the type of people that we need to stay in the downtown. So I'm happy to answer questions on this, but I believe we have an opportunity to send a message to the federal government, president himself saying, this is the best use for us. We know that you've talked a lot about workforce housing. You understand that there's an issue, that you're pushing for more units, but the market has failed us when it comes to delivering affordability. And we're going to need, we're going to need an injection in order to make this, this happen. And I think Portsmouth is ready to say, this is, this is what we'd like to see there. You have the gavel. So you keep, you keep the gavel.
Counselor Tabor?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in support of this, too. I think that Griffin Place is the model here. I wrote a column, an op-ed recently, and I had a chance to talk to two residents there. And one is a young man who grew up in Portsmouth, went to Portsmouth High School, worked in the restaurant business, and wants to become a teacher like his mother was, and teach kids in his high school. And he is a para in one of our elementary schools. And Ruth Griffin Place allows him to live here and pursue his goal while he's getting his further education to be a teacher. And he said, I'll earn too much when I'm a teacher to live here, but for now, it's enabling him to serve our community and make his career happen as a Portsmouth school teacher. Talked to another woman who was, takes care of kids at Seacoast Community, a daycare center. And Griffin Place allows her to take care of the kids of this city. So I think we know that people need affordable housing and workforce housing. What we forget is we need them. Our community needs them. And the market will not fulfill that need. The market is working against that need. So it's been our priority as a council to have workforce housing and affordable housing. We know from our flash vote polling, it's the largest concern. When you look at a sample of the community, they're telling us, this is our biggest concern. And lastly, I think this is a triple win, if we can pull this off. As I said, it addresses our number-one city need, which is housing. But it also gives the congressional delegation and Holland and Knight the best argument to get the building at no cost under the 2004 Senate Bill 1589. We get the extra dividend that we can keep this as a public benefit, this property. And the dividend is that we protect the character of that part of town. So, and then you, you, you learn, as the mayor has told us, that there's now instruction from the White House to the GSA to make surplus property available for housing. And, you know, that's just, to me, it's like, it's like in poker, when you pull a card up and draw it into an inside straight. It's just a lucky development that fits with everything we're trying to do. And, but you only can play that, that hand in poker if you go ahead and play the hand. So I think that's what we need to do. It's a great opportunity. And lastly, you know, we, we set a policy direction as a council when we voted to engage Holland and Knight and try and get the property, because they said we have a very good claim. And I think this refines and makes really effective our case to get, to get the property. So, so my hope would be that we all vote for this, and we show the unanimous will of the council to make this affordable housing and take that route.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor, Counselor Denton, and then Counselor Moreau.
Thank you. Although I voted against lobbying to obtain the building, Christina Luskey, who spoke earlier, is correct. Up until 2017, I was talking about the best purpose of this building would be affordable housing. And if we were to get the building through the lobbying effort, I think it would be the best use of the building to be set as a policy. With that, I did want to simply mention to set expectations that in 2017, one of the potential bidders on the McIntyre building was Wynn Companies. And I absolutely loved their idea, because they wanted to do just what we're talking about doing, using federal credits and grants to turn the McIntyre into affordable housing. They self-selected out of the process. I would love to see this essentially make up for those lost five years if we did obtain the building. But they may have self-selected out of the process, because the numbers might not add up. But as a matter of policy, if the lobbying effort is successful, this is the best use of the property.
Thank you. Counselor Moreau?
Thank you. I only voted to move forward with the firm to lobby to get this property with the idea that affordable housing could go in the McIntyre building. With that said, I think that I want everyone to understand, I don't plan on the city developing this property as workforce housing. I just want workforce housing in the building. And if we are fortunate enough to actually own the building at the end of this process, then that is the direction, I think, that is 100% the right way to go, is that we put affordable housing. People talk about the missing middle. Well, it's the workforce that is the missing middle, and that's exactly what this building would be for. So I think we actually satisfy a lot of the needs of the city by doing that.
Thank you. Your Honor?
I would clarify to Counselor Moreau and to the public that it is not the intention of the motion to lay a path for the city of Portsmouth as an entity to be a property developer. PHAs are often, and we talk about PHA, because our Public Housing Authority happens to also be named Portsmouth Housing Authority, but they're instrumentalities of the state created by housing and urban development that have authority to raise tax credits as other entities do. But the goal would not in any way for us to be a property developer, trying to figure out how to do that. It would be to tell the federal government that we believe that this is the best use of it, and we would acquire it for that purpose.
Correct. Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I struggle with this one a lot, because I support affordable housing. However, I don't support this path forward. When you've been sitting at the gambling table for 20 years, and every hand comes up empty, you know, it's time to walk away. And that's where we find ourselves today. The other reason I don't support it is we've identified four parcels of land that would be suitable for affordable housing. And if we move forward with this, we're hitting the pause or the stop button on moving forward with one of those parcels. Some of the GSA funding expires October 12 of this year, $860,000 in grant money towards development plans that we could put towards one of those four parcels that's ready to go. We're going to miss the window if we try and pursue this with the K Street lobbying firm, which I might add, didn't have much incentive to say they didn't like our chances, because they wouldn't have gotten us to come on board with them. So it would have been nice to get a third-party's opinion on that. The building's 107,000 square feet. Talked to a number of architects over the weekend. They all estimate between $300 and $500 a square foot. So if you use the middle, $400 a square foot, that'd be 42.8 million. You wouldn't redevelop all of it into affordable housing. I said 90,000 puts us at 36 million. Typically, 60% of your costs in a project are the construction cost, which would be the 36 million. 20% is land acquisition, which in this case would be zero. And 20% would be soft costs. And maybe there might be an extension to that October 12 date, and we could get some of that 860,000. But using LIHTC grants, even with the new proposed funding, I just don't see how this project pencils out. And I worry we spend a bunch of time chasing it instead of developing the four parcels of land we've already identified. There's 51 windows aside. There's 102 windows, not including the two ends on the McIntyre building. As a monument, we know we can't really change the outside too much, so we're kind of constrained with those windows, which are not really ideally suited for residential uses. The other... The other issue I have is the GSA does, or the proposal I think we should be making is if President Biden and our congressional delegation want to do affordable housing, well, the federal government did two of the best projects in Portsmouth, and that's Atlantic Heights and Panaway Manor. The GSA has exactly one commercial building out for bid at auction right now, and that's 80, is it 80 Daniel Street? 80 Daniel Street. I was thinking of 60. So what we could do is develop one of the four parcels we've identified, and we could go back to our congressional delegation and the federal government and say, if the GSA is serious about turning commercial buildings into housing, why not start with the one building you have that is out to bid right now and make it a federal project, just like you did Atlantic Heights and Panaway Manor?
I don't know that the proposal would prevent them from doing that. We are simply saying we would like to see affordable housing there. The motion is to convert that building to affordable housing. I think we can get there with exactly the motion that's on the table. If they came back and said, hey, we love this idea. We're so happy you're supportive of it. It's great to know that you would love to see affordable housing there. We're going to take the ball and we're going to build it. I don't think, you know, I don't think that it would take away their ability to do so by, by saying that we, as a council, if we can align some funds, a lot of funds, and some willpower, would like to see affordable housing there. I think that if they stepped in and said, you know what, we want to do this ourselves, I don't think this motion would, would hold them back from doing so. Oh, sorry.
Counsel Lombardi.
Yeah, I, we've already missed this year's money. I mean, that had to be in already. I think that was discussed when PHA came and gave their proposals that they have to, they have to be going for money next year, not this year.
I'll give you a second bite of the F in a moment. Counsel Blaylock.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I can't help remember, I can't forget going to the ribbon cutting ceremony of Ruth L. Griffin Place. And I remember Governor Stunna was nice enough to come down, and he said, we should be copying and pasting this all over the state. I know the housing issues are more exacerbated in Rockingham County, they're more exacerbated in Portsmouth than the rest of the state. The problem is a bigger problem here. We need the support of our congressional delegation. We need the support of the United States, President of the United States. This mission aligns with your mission. City of Portsmouth, this is a need for us. This is not a want. Like you said, the workers are a backbone. This is what made City of Portsmouth so great. All the wonderful restaurants, wonderful shops, those aren't great if there's no one there to work, work there. But I hope our congressional delegation is listening. I repeat what the governor said, we should be copying, pasting this all over the state where we can. I hope we can do that here. I think that would be a win for everyone. I think it'd be a win for Portsmouth, the state of New Hampshire, and Rockingham County.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to answer some of the concerns that were raised by residents. I know we received a lot of email this, this week about this project. And one of the things that I repeatedly heard is that, you know, how much money is it going to take to maintain this property while we're waiting? And that's one of the questions that I asked at the last council meeting. Our carrying cost right now is covered entirely by the parking revenue, and it comes out of those parking funds. So it's not costing the city funds to currently maintain the building as it sits there. And I think that's important for residents to understand. So we're not asking to incur additional costs, carrying costs of holding the building. But also, it's been pointed out that, well, you have these other sites you identified, are you just going to abandon these other possible sites for affordable housing? And the answer is absolutely not. You know, the Land Use Committee came back to the council with a report of four potential sites for affordable housing. And it's not a question of just where do we build the site. It's a, it's a question of the timing on that because it's not just one site that we're going to need to develop to satisfy our need for affordable housing. We'll have to develop all of those sites. And we still won't meet the need in Portsmouth for affordable housing because we're talking about a significant portion of our population. So even if we develop all four of the potential sites we have now for affordable housing and the McIntyre site for affordable housing, we're still not going to meet the need of this city. And I've seen what happens in cities that don't have affordable housing. I spent my very early twenties in San Francisco, and it's been very well-publicized what's going on in that city right now. And it started with lack of affordable housing and people having to move further and further from the city, and those workers commuting two and a half, up to three hours pre-pandemic just to work in the city. And what happened when the pandemic hit is they realized that they didn't need to make that commute, and they could find alternatives. So when you start losing workers, you start losing businesses. They don't have anyone to work in the businesses. We're also seeing that in Portsmouth already, if people don't realize it. When our workers move outside the city, they don't spend their dollars in the city. And so if anyone's noticed, downtown's pretty quiet late at night. It's because most of the workers who used to live in the city and work in our businesses downtown can't afford to anymore. So they've moved to places like Dover and Rochester. And in doing so, they've taken their money to Dover and Rochester. So when they finish their shift downtown, they go home to Dover, and that's where they go out and spend their money. So we're already seeing the effects of not having affordable housing for our workers. And the end effect of that is the wonderful places that everyone enjoys going in Portsmouth won't exist because we won't have anyone to work there. And so we have to be thinking about this comprehensively, and that's why we'll support this, because we desperately need more affordable housing. And this space in the city is an ideal location for workers who work downtown in our downtown businesses, and it also eliminates their need to pay for things like cars because they're walking distance to work.
Thank you, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I guess I share everybody else's concern about affordable housing. I just think we should move forward with one of these other projects. So the grant I was talking about earlier was just released July 21st, 2023, and it's the FR 670 N-29L grant with a floor of 200,000 and a ceiling of 860,000. And it's for exploring office to residential conversions, which I think the Sherburne School would probably qualify for. So one of the, the big challenges with the Sherburne School itself is that it's very expensive to mediate it. This grant might take close to a million dollars out of that, that challenge. But if we're not pursuing that, we're going to miss the window of opportunity.
Thank you. Your Honor.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I don't have the rough estimates of how many units we could stick in the Sherburne, just the site itself. I think it's like 12.
12 to 15.
12 to 15. We're talking about a significantly bigger chunk at the McIntyre site. And I do think that there's a lot of work that we have to do on that site at Sherburne that's frankly not going to be done by October. There's a lot of community, the way, you know, I'll take the L on that, the way that, you know, rolled that out was not conducive to bringing as many people along with us. I think this is the exact opposite of that. I think that there's an opportunity for Portsmouth to say something that a lot of people have been whispering, you know? The one question I get all the time is, why'd you let those condos go up, Dee? Why'd you let another hotel? And I'm like, hey, man, there's private property rights here. Private property exists for a reason. We fought for the, the ability to control our own destiny, create our own country, and a big part of that was private property rights. So to say, hey, why'd that condo go up? Well, somebody wanted to build a condo on the land that they owned. This isn't land that anybody in the city of Portsmouth owns. This is land that's owned by the federal government, and we have an opportunity to do something pretty big. Even if we don't get this built, we get to say the city of Portsmouth is behind affordable housing in our center. That we say, I don't have a crystal ball, but based on all of the work that we did changing the land use, to just say, hey, we're going to look at the market rate, what can it support? It can probably support about 5% at leveraged capital of rented units or 10% of owned units. There's a huge opportunity to be able to say, you know what, we want, we want to put workers here. And the best part about this is that, you know, some votes, you know, they, they, they come up and they, and they, they sneak by you, and you realize later that you made a mistake, you know? But what we have here is the opportunity to say, you know, to Portsmouth, we know what makes us special. And as much as it's the outdoor dining and, you know, the Market Square, how pretty it is, and Strawberry Bank, all of those things, it's our people. That's what makes us special. And we have a chance to take a big chunk of that and say, you know what, the future of Portsmouth is, it's going to be hotels, it's going to be really nice condos, it's going to be fancy dinners that I'm lucky enough to be able to take my wife to occasionally, love that. But it's also going to be the people that make all of that work. And this vote is to say, you know what, instead of condos that I'm not going to be able to afford or a hotel, we're going to put our people in the center of the downtown. That's what we're voting for, or we're voting against. And that's where the opportunity is for us to say to the feds, we got a plan. We want this here. We want affordable housing here. Might not be successful. Can't say that it's 100%. Probably on the other end of that scale. But we can be successful in saying what Portsmouth really values and really needs.
Thank you. I will, okay, Counsel. John's like blocking your head so you can't see me. Just to build on that a little bit more and to talk about the other properties, I don't see us as stopping the process with the other properties. I think the other properties, all of the properties are a long conversation and a lot of work that has to go into any sort of transformation into workforce housing. They all have, you know, their issues one way or another. So I feel like, and when you're talking, yeah, that's a grant, what Counselor Lombardi was talking about was actually the tax credits. There is only once a year that tax credits can be applied for. But I'd like to get, you know, if we could get the federal government to put their workforce housing there, and then we keep working on another project, we should be working on multiple projects or at least pushing multiple projects all at the same time. And we have to find a way to do that, whether it's talking to private businesses to do their own projects, or it's talking to PHA about doing a project, or it's, you know, pushing the federal government to convert an office building they don't use. I think all of those conversations are important in order to try to help solve this problem. And I'd like to think that this council is behind all of those actions and that we support every single one of them to try to bring our workforce back to Portsmouth. Thank you, Counselor Moreau. Counsel Lombardi?
I, I would agree wholeheartedly that we need to be going in multiple directions because some of them are going to be successful, some of them aren't. And we shouldn't prejudge which ones they might be. We have to just go after them all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I will make a quick, brief comment. Now I understand what it's like, just have to wait. Not so patient. I think that, for me, that supporting of this motion is to say to the, you know, have the biggest voice to the federal government, to the GSA that says, we are committed. And we don't know what it's going to end up with at the end, but we have to take a step forward, and we have to show that we have resolved to move forward within this project if we have a chance of getting this building. I think that, to me, that is the major motivator for me supporting this motion. So with that, I will call the vote.
Should we have a roll call vote?
Do we want to roll call the vote on the, we already had the motion called, correct?
Yes.
This would be a roll call if you choose, so.
Yes. We will do a roll call.
Okay. You will vote last, just to let you know.
First time.
Mayor McKeckren, you vote first.
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Aye.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Eight to one, motion passes.
Perfect. And I will hand the gavel back. I'll raise my hand to make a motion to suspend the rolls to go past 10:30.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Next up, some appointments to be considered. Paul Messier to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Megan Fabreja to the Library Board of Trustees, Jennifer Mattlebaum to the Library Board of Trustees, William Bowen to the Planning Board as an alternate, and Ivy Robichard to the Sustainable Practice Blue Urban Committee. Those will be at the next meeting. No motion is necessary, and it's with regrets that we accept, or I'd move to accept and send a letter of thank you to Alan Gould from the Economic Development Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's right, keynote. So the keynote question on the municipal ballot, I'd wait a motion to place the keynote question. Oh, I guess, since it's me, I got to pass the gavel. Passing the gavel to the Assistant Mayor. I would move to place keynote question, shall we allow the operation of keynote games within the city of Portsmouth on the November 7th, 2023 municipal ballot and hold a public hearing at the October 16th, 2023 city council meeting? If I get a second, I will speak to it. So really quickly, I, I support, I always support when it's possible and when it's certainly necessary to ask the people what they want. In this case, it's possible and necessary for us to allow keynote here. I, I think especially as the advent of sports betting has, you know, it's basically in everybody's pocket all the time. And if you go to places like, you know, Alex, they have the poems already. I, I don't think, you know, the fears that maybe Portsmouth had at one point on this that keynote would be going in, you know, to establishments downtown, I doubt keynote's going to be at Jimmy's, you know? But it, you know, allowing the people to make up, you know, their mind, and then allowing businesses to have that ability to make up, you know, and self-determine, I think it's worth hearing from the people.
Counsel Moreau?
Just to add to that is the fact that, and we heard from several people tonight, that the money that these establishments make off of that, they actually put back into the community. So I think it is important to let the community hear that and use that when they go to the polls and for them to be able to give us the final decision.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yeah, just reaffirm Counselor Moreau's thing. This does, in the end, this just creates more charity funds, and it's from these establishments that really want to do it, and sort of their patrons and their members. So, I mean, if there's a keynote machine at the bar, you said it, you don't have to play, you know, but, but the people that want to play it, and then it does, the fact that it does create money for good causes, I'd be supporting this.
Counselor Cook, then Counsel Lombardi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I support this, and the reason I support it is I think it's really helpful to let our citizens make these types of decisions, and that's exactly what we're doing. We are putting something on the ballot so that our residents get to vote and make that decision. I think it's a, it's always a good policy to ask their, their opinion.
Thank you. Counsel Lombardi?
I agree. I think it's a good thing to put to the citizens. What I would like to know is, when, the money that is made from keynote, where does it go and what percentage comes back to charity?
I can answer that question. So actually, with the help of the city clerk, we reached out to the lottery commission, and the lottery funds all go into the Education Trust Fund. The retail partners that sell keynote receive 8% of profit of every keynote ticket sold, which last year was over $4 million. And... they did a survey of retailers that sell Keno through UNH, and 75% reported that it added to their revenues in the location, in some cases substantially. But the, it contributes with all the other lottery profits to the Education Trust Fund. And last year, according to Mr. McIntyre, the New Hampshire Lottery transferred over $187 million to the Education Trust Fund. 10 million of that coming from Keno tickets.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Counselor Denton.
Thank you, Your Honor. If memory serves me correct, in the past, the New Hampshire Lottery Commission had to send somebody to present to the council. So it might be worth looking into that to make sure, if that's a requirement, that we have them present to the council the day we vote or before we vote.
Okay. Refer back to staff on that.
I'd support it just because I think this is the fourth time, if I'm not mistaken. And each time it gets closer and closer, there's a, a lot of support for it already. And I think those supporters deserve to have a chance to have it voted again.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we call the vote? Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I will hand the gavel back.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Hand the gavel back. All right. We've gone through Counsel Denton and Counsel Cooks. Counselor Moreau, you're up.
Yes, I was hoping, I know that the report for my request regarding moving Route 1 traffic over to State Street and making it two-way went back to Parking, Traffic and Safety. So my sample motion is I move to request a report back from Parking and Traffic, Parking and Traffic Safety Committee on the state of the project, process of this project. Sorry, it's too late for me to talk.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just kind of really looking. I know that it'll be a project to be able to go back to the state of New Hampshire and get their permission as well. So I guess I'm just looking to try to find out through the committee and through staff where all that lies and to just get a real update.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Bagley.
Got to get back to the agenda. One minute minutes. I move to accept and approve the action sheet in minutes of the July 6, 2023 Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee.
Second.
And I'll just speak briefly to it. We had a number of updates on speed bumps and speed cushions. Two more will be going in Eldridge. The ones in Suzanne Drive seem to be working. And notable, probably for most people, is the ones on Woodbury. There are two temporary ones. We, we are in the process, I believe, maybe even today, we moved them to the other end of Woodbury. And based on the data we collect from those two places where it's dropping the speed from about 36, 37 miles an hour to about 25. So they're working very effectively in getting people to obey the speed limits. Next year, what we would do is put in permanent asphalt ones. They would be removed for the winter because the, the rubber ones won't hold up to the plows.
For the record, I went up and down Woodbury several times on Friday, and there was nothing there. I think they just removed them for the short term.
They're moving.
Yeah, they removed them from one end and they're.
But no, I went end to end and they were not at the other end either. For the record.
They, they will be soon.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to schedule the first reading of the proposed changes to the Economic Development Ordinance at the August 21st City Council meeting.
Second.
And I'd like to just bring that up here. The primary, there is a small change to the ordinance after it was presented at the council at our last meeting, or I think it was two meetings ago. But that, what happened was the, the language that was added to create a good rotation of members needed to be edited. The original language ended up having, not actually accomplishing the job. So the, the new language creates a rotation that in '27 has two changes, '28, two changes, '29, two changes, and '30, three changes. So it just, it, it solves the problem of the rotation just over time.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Counsel Lombardi. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. If everyone would indulge me, I would like to move up item three under my name. I would move to move that up, the report back first. If I get a second.
Second.
To suspend the rules and move it up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I'll start with the mid-year report from the Governance Committee. And I'm going to go quickly. I know how late it is. I'm sorry that it's so late for this discussion. We just wanted to give the council a quick update of where we have been in the last year. As you know, we completed a donations policy. And tonight, we completed some changes to the administrative ordinance to bring it in line with anticipated language for this day and age. The committee also worked very closely on mapping out what our committees are as a city as a whole. And those updates have helped inform website updates for the city, which I think have been very helpful for individuals trying to figure out what committee is, what it does, where it's located in the city government. We have put forward tonight requested changes for, that we reviewed on behalf of the EDC, thanks to Counsel Lombardi this evening. We've also had changes come forward on the Cable and Broadband Internet Committee and the Cemetery Committee that were reviewed by the Governance Committee, as well as a new ordinance for the Public Art Review Committee, the policy updates and the ordinance updates around public art. As you will see, forthcoming Blue Ribbon Committee conversions. And tonight, I will be presenting one of those first, the converting the Arts and Nonprofits Committee into an Arts and Cultural Commission. I also anticipate coming forward soon, changes from the Sustainability Committee. And that's another Blue Ribbon Conversion Committee. The committee also anticipates potential changes for the Blue Ribbon Committees, the African Burying Ground Stewardship Committee, the Portsmouth Energy Advisory Committee, the Citywide Neighbor Committee, and the Sister Cities Blue Ribbon Committee. Those are the other four that were identified as potential conversions, but that really depends on where those committees stand. We know that Arts and Nonprofits and Sustainability are coming forward to the council. Also, I think it's important to know that Governance has been working very diligently on updating the Conflict of Interest section of the Ethics Policy. Last year, as you'll remember, we updated the Ethics Ordinance and the procedures around ethics, but we didn't update that Conflict of Interest section. So we started that process in March. And tonight, we're also bringing forward from Governance the first changes to that, the updates to Sections 1-801 and 1-802. That's the Direct Conflict of Interest section in the Ethics Ordinance. But currently, we're also working on changes to 1-902, which are really election disclosures. And we verified that for this upcoming election, we're not requesting any changes. So these changes that we would have coming forward, those recommendations, would be for the election in 2025. So I think that that's important to note. We're also starting to work on Section 1-901, which is municipal disclosures. So some of the concerns that we've had raised in the community and concerns that council's even received lately are related to those disclosure pieces that just haven't come forward yet, that are coming forward from Governance, as well as a potential conflicts of interest policy for the council to, to consider. So we've been doing quite a bit. We're also working on the sidewalks policy that the council referred to us. And there are a few items that are still in process from last year. We'd, had been considering what to do around parks in the city and which committee or committees would have responsibility around parks for recommendations for the city. And we also had been considering appointments and rebalancing appointments where they're out of stagger. And we don't have a good solution for that yet. And so that's why we haven't brought that forward to the council. So it might not come back to the council anytime soon. But I think it's important for everyone here to know that the Governance Committee has been working on all of these issues in the last year. So that's, that's where we are.
That's impressive. Thank you, Counselor Cook.
And with that, I'm going to bring up my second item. I move to schedule first reading of the draft ordinance on August 21st, establishing an Arts and Cultural Commission to replace the Arts and Nonprofits Blue Ribbon Committee. If I get a second, I'll speak to that.
Second.
The Governance Committee has worked with the Arts and Nonprofits Committee on this recommended change. It's a conversion from the existing Arts and Nonprofits Blue Ribbon Committee. And this really is generated in a request from the Cultural Planning Subcommittee. It's looking at the cultural planning process and saying, hey, when we adopt a new cultural plan for the city, assuming that one is coming forward at the end of this year, we really need a standing committee to implement and help the city in implementing that cultural plan. So that is the impetus for that conversion of the Arts and Nonprofits Committee. And they're requesting that we look at that. And there are recommendations around an Arts and Cultural Commission for the city that is very much similar to like the EDC's work for the city on business, so.
Any further discussion? Sounds great to me. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And my last and final item. Move to schedule first reading with a formal presentation from the Governance Committee on August 21st on the proposed changes to the Ethics Ordinance around Conflict of Interest.
Second.
And again, I foreshadowed this a little bit in the report. These are recommended changes that the Governance Committee has worked on for four months with our legal counsel. The legal counsel has been extremely helpful in helping draft language. And we've received quite a bit of input from the public around potential changes to this Conflict of Interest section. And the committee would like to make a formal report with the assistance from the Legal Department at our next meeting for first reading, if we get there.
Counsel Lombardi.
I would add that we also had input from professional ethics people, past mayors. We, it's been a heavy lift. But I think we have made good progress on this. And I think it will always be taking amendments. You know, it's, it's one of those things that is always going to be tweaked in the future. But I think we have a good product now.
Look forward to the first reading, where amendments can be made, and then go to second reading. So look forward to that and thank you for all the work that has gone into that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are on to no approval of grants or donations. City manager, two informational items left.
That's right. Number one is, sorry, number two in the packet is the Community Campus Wetlands delineation update to give you all a sense of what we learned when we completed the wetland delineation study this, earlier this spring. There are essentially two ways to look at the property around the existing building known as Community Campus. And I think I would like to reiterate at the outset that there's been no effort to define a building site per se or to cite a project. So what we can do at this point is to tell you where the buffer line delineates what can be built and what cannot. So if you exclude the wetland buffer completely and give the most conservative read of the survey, that would provide a total acreage of land outside the wetland and the buffer to be just over five acres. That includes a half an acre parcel over on Banfield, some acreage behind the existing building, and then some other area in, in the vicinity of where the Roundabout and the pickleball courts are now. If you were to consider a building within the buffalo, the, inside the wetland buffer, that expands the potential for development to as many as 14 and 3/4 acres. Again, with no building in mind, again, with an understanding that there are improvements that have been made within the wetland buffer that we all see now, which includes some of the parking and the roadway. So this is just a point of reference and a piece of information to hold on to as we, as we move forward, considering all sorts of things that the city is looking to cite. But this gives you a, a better window into what the opportunity, what the opportunities are at Community Campus. Number three is an update with where things stand relative to the Prescott Park Master Plan implementation. You will recall back in March at the CIP meeting, there was a request that we come back with a cost estimate to not only move the shop, but include a final design for the interior and the addition that would be necessary to house, to house code compliant material. So what we've done is, in the very end of your packet, provided that cost estimate from Weston and Sampson. We plan to move forward. We have the monies on hand, and we just wanted to bring the council up to date on where things stand. With that, happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you, city manager.
Thank you.
Counselor Moreau.
I'd just like to, I know it's late, so I'll take two seconds, to publicly thank first Don and Massimo and Robin, who were the team leaders of the Little Italy Carnival. We had hundreds of volunteers and residents and participants who all took place yesterday. It was a very long day for someone like me who was there for the whole thing. But it was a lot of fun, from what I've heard from everyone. Everyone seemed to really enjoy themselves. Everything seemed to go off fairly smoothly. And I think we learned a lot of lessons about how we could, you know, do it in the future as well. But I think at least for a first try, it seemed to be very successful. And the feedback we've gotten from people has been fairly positive. So hopefully, we can take that as a model to move forward and continue to try to, you know, recognize what the city did in the past and try to support and be there for those residents moving into the future.
It was great.
The mayor was a judge. He, he seemed to have fun.
Love sand art. All right, that's, daughter loves sand art. I love sand art. It's a great day. Counsel Lombardi.
I just, well, I, I took my almost three-year-old granddaughter, and she had a good time. She loved the acrobats, she, the, the sand art, the face painting. Although she didn't get her face painted, but my wife did. So it was great. And what struck me about it, it was very much a community event. It wasn't, it wasn't people from all over the place. It was really kind of a community event. And I, I liked that. I kind of miss those things, you know?
Well, I know, I was probably, I think, the only one of this group that was at the feast in the evening. But it was just tables of those old Italian families. It was multi-generational of people in the room. And it was really nice to see them just all being able to see one another and talk and, and, you know, reminisce. And I think they all had a really, really great time at the end of the day.
Wonderful.
With that?
That was it.
Move to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.